All right, we'll call the meeting. The order, I appreciate everybody's patience while we've got all the void ones here. The roads are really bad. First order, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of Abels. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Do with your heart, for which it stands, unwavering, under God, in this world, with every intention of justice and progress. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Seguino, can I have a second? Commissioner Judson, all those in favor of the agenda stated please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We should pass it again. Okay. Moving on to public comment. So folks, with everybody here, we might have different topics to talk about, so I really ask that everybody try to keep their comments to two minutes. We have a two-minute timer up here. It'll go, you'll hear the bell ring when the two minutes are up. We prefer that you don't pass off time to somebody else, something like that, because everybody should have a chance to talk about whatever subject they find is important. Okay? So we'll start now.
Scott Hubbard.
Early bird gets the worm, huh? Where do you want me? Over here?
Yeah, back table.
Right over there? Front and center?
Yep.
I'll try to be less than two minutes. First of all, thank you for giving us the time to talk tonight. Before I say my piece, I want to acknowledge that Harris here and support them. It's hard for me to understand how we run a million-plus surplus and yet still can't settle that contract. But I'm here to talk about my utter disbelief that the golf program was on the list of potential cuts. I'm here speaking as the golf coach and the golf coach at the high school for 16 years. I'm also here to support Alpine as well, Alpine skiing. When I looked at the slide in the presentation, I noticed that it said that the district wasn't interested in supporting these programs that students could participate without BSD support. And that's just not the truth at all whatsoever. I think I had 12 boys on the team this year. None of them play outside of high school golf, none of them. 10 of them were freshmen, brand-new players. Some of them didn't even have clubs. So this is a place where they come to learn the game. And I certainly would not have the opportunity to play without those in school district I guess I'm disappointed that a program that's decades-old, over 75-years-old, we just, Burlington has supported for that long, would, all of a sudden, next year, we just can't do it. And, you know, the AD was not informed of this. I was not informed of this. Just a little disappointed in that decision that was made, you know, to a program where we don't have cuts, we include everyone, we fundraise every year. The district has never paid for a uniform as long as I've been coach. And we serve, you know, in each year anywhere from 15 to 20 boys to girls. So I was again from here, you know, speaking for the golf program and hopes that you would reconsider that for next year. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Hale and I am the Math Interventionist at Edmonds Elementary School. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you a bit about what our Math Interventionists do. I'm going to talk about what we do in two priority areas: reducing the disparities and closing the achievement gap and raising the bar. To work toward closing the achievement gap, we provide early intervention to K-3 students. We assess students. We plan and review expectations for district assessments. We analyze data at the student, class, and school levels. We maintain math school data walls. We create data reports looking at subgroup performances. We facilitate whole staff conversations about our achievement gaps. We inform teams and teachers on needs and strategies. We meet with small groups of students to work on foundational skills. We support students during grade-level curriculum instruction. We create visuals, tools, and models for individual students or whole classrooms. We provide training and ongoing consultation for paraeducators. We develop assessments for measuring progress. We develop individual interventions for students. We serve in educational support teams to develop plans, goals, and interventions. We consult with special educators on assessments, goals, and services. To help raise the bar for all students, we support new teachers with our math curriculum. We help teachers differentiate, supplement, and pace their math instruction. We analyze end-of-module assessments and make recommendations for instruction. We support teachers in integrating the math practice standards. We serve on leadership teams and ESSA teams. We meet with teachers during common planning time and PLCs. We summarize and review district and state assessment data with teams. We strengthen vertical alignment. We provide Tier One math instruction in multi-age classrooms. We help align math vocabulary. We help to integrate technology. We attend professional development opportunities such as the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Conferences and bring back the latest research to our district. We consult with classroom teachers around best practices and our leaders in growth mindset strategies. Thank you.
Hello, I am Christine Harvey and I'm the Math Interventionist at CP Smith School. This is my 25th year here in the Burlington School District. If we were to look at the Burlington School's homepage, it states in big, bold letters, "Our district priorities are reducing the disparities in closing the achievement gap and raising the bar." As Math Interventionist, we are former classroom teachers and special educators. We see the struggling learners and are dedicated to closing this significant gap. We're committed to this mission and would like to work with the board to make this a reality. We need to bring these words into action. We can't simply post words and not have the means to make them come alive. It's been brought to our attention that there is a recommendation to eliminate six of the 12 Math and Literacy Interventionists. We're puzzled as to how this will reach your goal and our goal of meeting the diverse needs of our students and raising the bar. We ask that the board and administrators involve us in any changes that might need to be made. We want to work with the board and administrators to close the achievement gap. Please help us to understand who will be left to support classroom teachers and children. Taking away the people that work directly with our students doesn't seem to coordinate with the district's priorities, clearly stated on the webpage. You're leaving classroom teachers and students with less support. There is no magic wand to make the achievement gap smaller. We need all hands on deck. We need all 12 Interventionists, not fewer. While it may be a reality that the district needs to cut costs, please look at other options that you may have. Please don't give all of our students less support. Without Interventionists working collaboratively with the classroom teachers, special educators, and EL teachers, all students are impacted. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jeff Comstock. I live in Ward Seven. And for a little bit of context, I'm the fellow who had a "I support my school board" sign on Plathburg Avenue last fall, so, for which I took a fair amount of grief on your behalf. But I'm here because I have a message for you, the board, that I'm unhappy with what I heard at the last week's meeting. In fact, I'm a little bit, was a little bit appalled to hear the board bargaining over the potential budget increase as if you were bidding at an auction. Setting the budget target based on what you can sell to the public rather than the actual need to operate the school district is highly inappropriate. So if 6.97 percent represents a level-funded budget, to have a discussion of, well, maybe eight, maybe nine, as long as we keep it under 10, I'm sorry, but that's not a decision I can respect. So when I got home, I did a little math and I discovered that, at this point in my life, I could be as insensitive as you because now that I'm retired, my property taxes are approaching 10, will approach 10 percent of my income, and now my actual tax payments are going to go down if my pre-bate goes up. So that means I could join the large segment of the population that'll vote for anything because they really don't have to pay for the increase. I am aware of the current discussion in Montpelier about setting the cap on the pre-bates funding, but quite honestly, I'm really not worried about that because I'm far enough below the cap that that's not going to impact me. So the last point I want to make is that I'm afraid that education property taxes, like income taxes, in that the largest dollar amounts are actually paid by a small number of higher-income people, which is one reason why I think budgets continually pass. So my request to the board is stop manipulating this discrepancy and help us all live within our means. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gail Vitello. For the last 15 years, I've been a health and phys ed teacher at Burlington High School. Most recently, my role has changed to District PLP Coordinator. And I'm here to speak on the proposal of eliminating the 1.0 full-time phys ed teacher at BHS. So a quick summary, somewhere I read that BHS has four phys ed teachers. That's incorrect. We have three. So eliminating a phys ed teacher will leave us with two full-time phys ed teachers. And to put that in context, for over 900 students, that's the same as Winuski High School. The second point I'd like to bring to your attention is that phys ed classes are EL classes. Any cuts to phys ed are direct cuts to the EL students in our district. Many of you may not know that many of our students take several phys ed classes to fill their schedule and to immerse them in the language. This is a setting where they, this is one of the few mainstream classes that newcomers to our district will take. So our classes at BHS are 85 minutes long, five minutes with passing time. Works out to be 395 minutes, we think about four blocks a day, one advisory, one lunch. I can name numerous research around this, but the most compelling, I think, is that after 20 minutes, our brain basically falls asleep. Everything that we are processing is really not working. So movement activities stimulate these neurons to fire. And this is why it's critical to have a phys ed class during the school day. It is a law. It must be a content-licensed teacher that is overseeing, assessing, reporting, and granting credit for our students in that specific, specific content area. A principal, a guidance director, or other licensed teacher cannot provide credit. Also, flexible pathways. Point five of the 1.5 can be given a flexible pathway, not the entire 1.5 credit. So only one of one course can be considered a flexible pathway. We already offer a flexible pathway. We offer this flexible pathways for the students that are transitioning and have to deal with locker rooms, the disabled student participating in physical therapy, the student who's self-conscious and desires to lose weight, or the student who has a full schedule, eight blocks, and just wants the flexibility. It's a proficiency-based and meets the state requirements. I, one last thought, I fully support flexible pathways to graduation. That is my current role in the district, but I do not support these pathways that undermine content areas and do not meet state graduation requirements. Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Karen Rubin. Stay over here. I am a CP Smith parent and I have been a PTO leader over the years at Smith. And then this year, I'm working as a parent in Edmonds School, so I'm in there and seeing things firsthand. I just want to say that I understand what some people are saying about taxes going up and it, obviously, that is an issue. But I feel like as Americans, we've committed ourselves to a free public education for all, and that costs money, so we have to fund it. So now that, the thing is, like, how much? What is it worth? So the problem is, here in Burlington, for the last, what, I don't know, seven years we've had cuts? Seven straight years of cuts? So our response to any pressure, even from the state level, where the governor's like, "Okay, we're not, we're out." You know, like, "Oh, you're out? Okay, so we'll get more from here?" Nope, the taxpayers are out. I don't, what, how, we're just going to keep on cutting until we aren't running our schools anymore? Like, are we committed to a free public education or aren't we? I feel like we are, and I feel like in this room, we are. We are committed to a free public education, right? Cut seven straight years in a row, cutting the Interventionists when our goal is to close the achievement gap is weird. It doesn't add up to me. Are we committed or aren't we? Because I know that I am, and I know that I will go the distance to help get this budget passed. I want the board to ask for the money they need to do the job that we need them to do. And I also want to say I can see the success of the system that we work in. I see kids coming out all the time. I have a son who's 26 and he's got, he's amazing, and he has amazing friends doing amazing things, and they are products of the Burlington school system. And I am grateful for that. And I think we should be proud of that work and we should say, like, it's an investment in our infrastructure, in the people in our community, and they give it back at the end of the day. So let's do what we have to do.
Thank you. I sent an email to Commissioners Wick and Seguino in support of the ski, the Alpine Ski Team and the golf team earlier in the week. Thank you for your replies over the weekend. I won't repeat what I said, but I would like to add to what I said. Let me be clear. I don't believe that we should cut any academic, athletic, or enrichment program before taking a long, hard look at administrative savings, especially without giving students adversely impacted adequate opportunity to find other activities in which to excel. That said, budgets are about priorities. Skiing and golf are lifelong sports, open to all at BHS, subsidized for many, with lower rates of injury than sports like football and soccer, and higher participation rates than basketball. Also, much less expensive than any of those three sports. And for those three sports, the vast majority of participants, as in 99.9 percent, will only be spectators later in life. Finally, the parents of the Alpine team are teachers, public and civil servants, single parents, and members of the military. That is to say, decidedly middle-class. To those who say that these sports are elitist and reserved for the rich kids, I say that if you cut them, they most certainly will be. Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Carol Livingston, and my husband and I have raised our daughter in Burlington. She's attended city schools from kindergarten through her current year as a senior at BHS. We have supported school budgets and much of the work of the school board, but I have major concerns about the proposed school budget for this coming year. It's been crucial to develop budgets with equity in mind. That's an important value that you all have shared, and as you look at your budgets and you look at your work, it's something that's very important to this board, is a sense of equity. I think most of us would agree that no one section of the school community should be targeted for either enhancements or cuts to services. Last week, the recommendations that you received did not meet that standard. In the K-8 enrollment slide, the figures state that 29 more students will be in middle schools next year and 58 fewer in the elementary schools. No middle school teachers are to be cut, and adding a halftime FTE middle school elective teacher was proposed. This is for a 3.6 percent enrollment increase. Elementary enrollment is projected to decrease by the same amount, 3.5 percent. With equity as a central value, you might think that cutting a half-teacher was proposed, but no. Board members were understandably alarmed to see that nine elementary teachers were proposed to be cut. For every half-middle school teacher added, you are asked to cut nine full-time elementary teachers. Please focus on the key goals as you revise this budget, reconsider the major cuts to the elementary school staff. These are the teachers who are instituting measures to narrow that achievement gap and who are integrating restorative practices into their classrooms. These efforts take experience, training, and a student-teacher ratio that makes sense. Thank you.
Hi, and thank you for this opportunity to comment. I have, I'm a parent in the district. I have sixth grader and freshman in high school. And I'm here to talk about the athletic programs that are proposed to be cut. My son is on both the Alpine Ski Team and the Golf Team. Those are terrific opportunities for students at our high school to be part of a team sport. Both of those sports are really, really inclusive. Nobody gets cut from those sports. Both of those sports are growing. There is almost unprecedented number of freshmen that were involved in those sports this year. I think that it's really important to have inclusive sports at the high school level, give everyone an opportunity to be part of a varsity sport, to be able to play on a varsity sport. I think that's a really important part of being a high school student. And finally, and Dave Gentman pointed this out, both of these sports are lifelong, lifelong outdoor activities. These are, these are the very things that we should be encouraging in our, for our high school students and the sort of sporting activities that we should support. So finally, I'd like to make the point that they have a very, very small budget footprint. I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation and the cost to run these two sports is approximately 1/50th of 1 percent of the school budget. It's very small, but I think it has a huge effect on the students that are participating. There's many, it's 40 or 50 students participating in these sports, and I hope they get put back in budget. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Hi, my name is Gina Jaffe-Halblin. I am the Literacy Interventionist at Edmonds Elementary School. I have worked for the district for 29 years, teaching reading to Burlington students. As Reading Interventionists, we work with teachers and students. Our job entails providing early intervention for students in K through 3. We work with students during first instruction or Tier One and during intervention blocks, boost. I work with over 30 students in one day. Our job also entails, as Kate has mentioned, working with teachers, assessing students, collecting the data, creating data walls and sharing them, creating groups with that for intervention, working with teachers, attending PLCs, talking about best practices for first instruction, intervention approaches, and also brainstorming student strengths and weaknesses and in the areas they need to work on. I'm also a member of the leadership team. I participate in the EST team, and I work as a group with my other literacy interventionists on district literacy curriculum. The main point I want to say is we work directly with students during first instruction and intervention blocks. By providing students with early intervention, we build the foundation for successful achievement that will serve these students for the rest of their education. Without both math and reading intervention, the gap in achievement will increase, leading students further and further behind, and the need for special education services will increase. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marlee Tipper. This is my second year as a phys ed Alpine captain. So I just want to let us know, it is essential to understand the sport before you think about cutting it. I've been doing this sport for four years. I was a freshman, and I've never raced before. And this year, I just won my first race. Yeah! Woo! I can get the support from my coaches and my teammates to be able to do that from BHS with the amount of money that we get? That's insane! And it just, it amazes me that you guys could even think of cutting it. Because I've spent my entire life skiing, and I've met all these kids, and my coaches, they're like family to me, and I keep in touch with them. And the coaches that were from last year, they congratulated me right when they heard the news. And my other coach, she has a three-year-old son now, and we still hang out, and his name's Remy. He's really cute. I just, when I wake up at 5:30 in the morning to go to a race, and we're on the bus and we're singing, and then we race down the hill and we're drinking hot chocolate and we go back as a team, it's great. It is one of the most incredible experiences, and I cannot stress this enough, because this team is everything to me. And when I got that email, my heart dropped, and it's beating right now like a freaking drum! And I just, I cannot stress enough. I need you guys to know what it's like to be on a team like this. Because I didn't get cut from this. I got cut from tennis. I hate that sport now. I didn't get cut from this team, and no one would get cut from this team. No one would get cut from golf. I know the coach is really good. He's my calc teacher. He's really awesome. And this, the sport, these sports, they're what makes BHS awesome. I'm a superfan. I run the Superfan Instagram account, and we have this huge hype videos, and we make everyone super excited to go to the games. So to think, oh, well, I can just race for another school, that'd be fine. Well, I'm pretty good, so I can't take a varsity sport, like, a spot away from another kid at another school. I can't do that. So I wouldn't get to race, and I wouldn't get to be a part of that team, and it wouldn't be the same, because I'm a superfan, and I am not going to race for rice. I will not do that.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Michelle Mathias, AKA Shelly Mathias, and I am the principal at Edmonds Elementary School. And I'm gratified that so many have come out to inform the school board about their feelings about the budget and maintaining adequate supports at the educational foundation. I've been in Burlington now for seven years, and each year, we have experienced cuts in our elementary school budget. This is not sustainable. The linkage of value received to dollars is essential in all economic decisions. And as one who's worked in industry for 25 years, I'm very concerned that the messages regarding Burlington's budget continuously focuses on tax rates. That's part of the story, but it's only part, and it's not necessarily the most important part. We don't just look at the price of a car or a cellphone. We look at how it serves our needs. If that weren't the case, we'd all be driving Hugos and have track phones in our pockets. I'm providing each school board member with a summary of my doctoral research that examines the relationship between cumulative per-pupil investment and student outcomes for 1,355 Vermont students, looking at their fourth, eighth, and 10th grade scores in math and literacy. The results show a strong relationship between the level of investment and how students perform over time. While I was only able to look at investment through eighth grade, the difference in math scores continued to grow significantly by 10th grade. This is very consistent with Burlington's math data. As a taxpayer, I recognize the hit we all share in when state and federal revenues are cut. As a principal, I can tell you that we are very careful with your dollars and conserve as much as possible. Our faculty, taxpayers themselves, frequently reach into their own pockets to provide material supplies and books for their students. I've never seen that practice in any other industry, but it's common among educators. Appleentium, basically, the importance of instruction, direct, the impact of direct instruction financing on long-term success of the students cannot be ignored. Please take a look at the results of my study. Thank you.
Bruce McDonald?
Marley Tipper, I'm Bruce McDonald. I have a son who was four years in the ski team, who's now club skiing, going to college in Montana. Had enough of an impact, it affected where he went to school. My other son is one of the captains on the ski team, and he's really not good at speaking in public, so I'd like to be his voice. The impact of a sports team on the development of young people can't be underestimated. If I were to ask people in this room about things they remember from high school, they generally aren't going to talk about some midterm they crushed. They're going to talk about some race they won, or some race they crashed, or the big game, whatever that was. So to think that we're going to shrink the programs that in some effect have the largest developmental aspect, it's, we're thinking the wrong things. We really fundamentally are. So the issue of this being a lifetime sport, I think, was well-covered. Kids are generally not playing field hockey when they're 60 years old. I know a ton of people who were skiing when they're 60. The concept of cutting the ski team in Burlington, Vermont, is staggering. The winter here is six months. We know this. It's a sport unlike any other sport in that it addresses the outdoors. Kids who go out for ski team, they'll be up on a hill at 7:30 in the morning, it's 10 below, it's blowing 20 miles an hour, and they're out there, and they're doing that. That doesn't happen in a basketball gym. It's part of the experience, it's part of the outdoor experience that's fundamental to the game. It's not about, it's about being outdoors in a way that no other sport does. You're in the woods when you're training up at Cochran's, you're training at night. That's the kind of outdoor experience that I think is fundamental in Vermont. These guys train at Cochran's, there are Olympians at Cochran's. We just sent a guy two weeks ago over to this Olympics. There's a family that's been doing that for generations. You guys should go on YouTube and punch in the name Charlie Brown. There's a five-year-old at Cochran's who will be in the Olympics, his name is Charlie Brown. So when they're up there training, they're surrounded by little kids who are excited about this game, and to think that they're going to do this for the rest of their life can't be underestimated. I don't know of any Olympians from Burlington that are playing basketball or soccer. Lastly, my son is, school can be a round peg sort of experience, and my son is a square peg. He has a hard time with school, he's dyslexic, he's in the Horizons program here. So he's sort of outside the general milieu of the experience of how it goes. You do these things, and then you go to college, and my son's experience is different. But he's on the ski team, he's the captain of the ski team. This is a fundamental experience in his life that is formative in a way that math will never be.
Mary McDonald?
I kissed a tree yesterday. Skiing, skiing's a family sport for us. So I've been involved with the Alpine team for six years. As Bruce just said, we've had two kids on the Alpine team. I think I wrote the board, and I got a lot of really nice responses, and thank you. But one of the comments that stuck with me was that most of these kids have more resources than kids from other teams. And I completely disagree with that. I come from a different background. I was a race coach for MMSE, which is up in Stowe. And I traveled all around with all these kids, lots of different kids, to all the different mountains. And yes, so my kids did grow up with a little bit of that, but my older kid, I think grade four, decided it was too intense. Stony is still on the team, but he stopped racing as an 8th grader, because his only other place to go from 8th, from 9th grade on was to go to an academy. And going to academies, one, we couldn't afford, it's way too expensive. And you're talking prep school. So that was his only choice. There is no, at high school level, you're either at an academy, or you're skiing high school racing. That's your two choices. So, one, we couldn't afford an academy, and he decided that he would rather high school race. And he had that opportunity because he went to VHS. A lot of these kids don't even have that opportunity. They don't, they're, they can't start ski racing in high school and just go to an academy. It's impossible. You have to start when you're a kid, and race USSA, and come up with a board. They can't just start racing when they're ninth, in the 9th grade. That opportunity is not available to them. If they're not high school racing, they will not be racing. It's just, that's a fact. So the high school racing gives them that opportunity. These kids come in here, some of them have never raced before. If some of them are really not even nice race skiers, that's okay. I can't tell you what I have seen in the last six years. I've seen kids that can barely ski become amazing skiers and gain so much confidence. It's been just, it's so rewarding to watch these kids do this, and their confidence levels go up, and they take this with them forever. Tony Skid, for example, captain of the soccer team, what is he doing? He's in Alta, skiing. He's at the University of Utah. He didn't go on to play soccer, he went to go skiing, and he became an amazing skier. He never ski raced a day in his life until he was a freshman in high school. And that's what, this is the opportunity you give them. Golf is the same way. I don't know much about golf, except for I see it on TV, and my dad's always watching it, but I know it's the same way. You know, it's an all-inclusive sport, you're not cutting kids. Kids can learn, and they can learn life lessons, they can learn about being on a team and being part of something that's really important. These kids go to these ski races, they're the most dedicated kids I've ever seen. They have to get on the bus at 5:45 in the morning, they get out there in 10-degree weather in a little tiny spandex suit and freeze their butts off. And they're out there doing it. There is, this is not a sport that, you have to really be dedicated. And I am so proud of all these kids, and I'm so proud of what I've seen from them. I can't even express more that this is the last thing you should be cutting. The last thing. So please, please think about that. This is so important to this program. We live in Vermont, Vermont, the economy is skiing here, folks. We really need to support that, too. All right, thank you.
Jeff Call, is it? Hal?
Jeff Call. Thanks for being here. I have a daughter, it's a sophomore, and is on the ski team. And I would like to applaud all the parents who have spoken, and Marley, she's a perfect example of what the ski team can turn out. The kind of people that grow in skiing are, it's a very, very different sport. To improve in skiing, you don't have to beat somebody, you don't have to knock somebody down, you don't have to stop somebody from scoring. You have to improve your ability to ski, and that's how you win. So it's, you know, it's kids that are learning self-improvement, and it's a skill that you can't put a value on, and it's something that they do take with them for their lives. I know that it's something that I cherish, is my weekend to spend skiing with my kids. That my mother, my kids got to ski with their grandmother, and I hate to say it, but I, at 61 years old, I do have a field hockey stick, and I do play field hockey. But, you know, skiing is very unique in that sense, as, you know, most people have, you know, have so eloquently spoken and are passionate about, because it does provide you with opportunities as a family, as a parent, you know, to bridge the generations. And, you know, one thing that Marley said with some enthusiasm is that she wouldn't go and ski on another team. But I do know, from being at the races, that if you do go to a race, you will see something you don't see at many other competitions, and that is kids from Burlington High School, and kids from South Burlington, and kids from Rice cheering for each other. And it's really cool. So I really think, I'd love you guys to think very seriously about the golf and the ski programs, which I think dovetail, you know, they have so much in common, and I'd hate for them to be cut, because I think they play a very important role in the development of our kids. Thanks.
Charlie Tipper?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hearing this cavalcade of support for the Alpine ski team. My name's Charlie Tipper. I'm proud to say I'm the father of Marley Tipper, who spoke a little while ago. I'm thrilled to see Isaac Gentman as the student representative on the board, I know he won't let the ski team get cut from the budget. So Marley is the third of my three children to be on the Alpine ski team. Her two older brothers had the same experience. Neither of them had raced prior to coming to VHS and learning to race courtesy of the Alpine ski team. They both also went on to be captain. I think that's a great story, that novice racers went on to be captains. And unlike their sister, my sons Jack and Willie, never did become the skiers that won, that got first place in races. But they consistently finished, and that made them extremely valuable members of the team. And that's something that I think has really stuck with them, is you don't have to be the fastest, but you do have to show up, you do have to try, and if you finish, that's worth something. That, and I don't know what other sport that's taught in, other than Alpine, other than high school, Alpine ski racing. It is not taught at any club racing. Those are go for gusto, if you're not, if you're not, and if you don't win, you're win or you're last. Anyway, so the all-inclusive nature of the Alpine ski team at Burlington High School is so valuable, open to all and no cuts. That's a great culture for us to be promoting. My second point is that I'll be really quick here. There's an epidemic in our country of kids not being out in nature. I don't think we can name a sport that gives kids more of a really dynamic opportunity to have that kind of dynamic interaction with nature in the mountains. Let's keep Burlington connected to the mountains and to the rest of Vermont, please. This is a great program for that. And in the name of value engineering, which I assume is a big part of why we're even discussing this, at $24,000, I understand is the number on the table for what it costs to fund the high school ski team. If my numbers are correct, that's .015% of the budget. The amount of volunteerism that you see represented just in this room, but from the rest of the ski team community is something unbelievable. And I would put it out there, the Alpine ski team has got to be one of the best bang-for-the-buck programs that you all ever, ever contemplate. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Board Reflections, if there's anybody else, anybody that would like to reflect, I won't be here tonight. Commissioner Wick?
Are there no more names on the list?
No more names on the list.
My name was supposed to be on there.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so you're welcome to come up and relate to it.
Thanks.
Did you sign up, or did you miss out on the sheet?
Kate signed, my name is...
Is that Greg Gillis?
Greg Gillis. Okay, that's fine.
Please, go ahead.
I don't mind going last. It's a, it's a pretty important issue here. I'm here, I'm a 5th grade teacher at Edmonds Elementary, and I'm here on behalf of our faculty who is shocked and chagrined to feel that we might be losing our interventionist positions. Our staff strongly values our math literacy interventionists and the model that their positions are based on. As part of our ESA, ESSA plan, our staff recently spent an entire afternoon in our in-service creating an action plan to close this achievement, the achievement gap. The top priority is that students need more targeted skills practice. This is what intervention is. And the interventions are the ones who are delivering these services. Classroom teachers are responsible for knowing and planning, reading, writing, phonics, math, science, social studies, responsive classroom, mindfulness, restorative practice, and social skills with a population with very wide disparities in their academic abilities, English language proficiency, and their socioeconomic status. Interventionists, by contrast, are experts in their specialty areas. They see a critical role providing targeted intervention to students and targeted curriculum differentiation. This is how to close the achievement gap. Currently, the only model we have in place in the Burlington Elementary Schools that works towards closing this achievement gap is the intervention model. Cutting the interventionist positions will compromise this model and will have a negative impact on student achievement across all grade levels. Most importantly, those most vulnerable students are going to be to speak of every time we talk about the achievement gap. These positions should be protected at all costs. Thanks.
I'll now turn it over to Commissioner Wick, I think you have a reflection.
Thank you. And you're sure no one else wants to speak? Usually, we ask if, no, okay.
Oh, could I?
You can, and we really just have to have this as the last one. Please come on up, because we have a whole budget presentation to go through.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lily and Shaw, and this is...
Alvin Wheeler.
We're both captains on the ski team currently, and we're both juniors. And we both started as freshmen, and neither of us had racing experience. But we've both grown to be very great racers on this team, and we've made connections with not just kids on the team, but coaches, and even connections with other kids from other schools. And when I tell my friends about being on the ski team, they're like amazed to hear about it, because it's so cool and so fun. And I'm like, hey, you can join, they're not going to cut you, they'll take anyone. And I know that we've all had really great experiences on this team, and saying this as a junior next year, I would hate to go my senior year without having my core value of high school not there. And I know that there's freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors leaving that don't want to see this team go.
Yeah, it's one of the best chances to balance out our daily kind of busy, stressful school schedule with something that we really enjoy, and we hope that you would consider allowing us to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Reflections, Commissioner Wick?
Oh, thank you, Chairman Porter. I would reflect as follows. I truly am humbled, and I don't speak for you, but I suspect you are too, by the turnout tonight and everyone who spoke and what they said, the direct, forgive me if I use a few legal terms, but the direct testimony we've heard from those inside the schools whom I'll call subject matter experts, because it's what they do every day. I'm going to further reflect that I think the board could benefit greatly from more direct testimony on a regular basis from our subject matter experts. I have learned so much from what everybody said, and I always do a board reflection. But I want to thank you all, and I also want to reflect that I'm seeing a number of perhaps newer faces who haven't come to school board meetings before. Clearly, this has brought you out for several reasons, but it's so important that you continue to be in touch and aware of what we're doing at the board level, because I would, I would further reflect that we're all just volunteers, parents, citizens, taxpayers. We don't have any special expertise, and we rely only, well, not only, but largely on what we hear in here and some of our assumptions that we make in here, which clearly can be quite false. So to me, the direct testimony of principals, interventionists, parents, coaches, I think we as a board need more of that on a regular basis, and those are my reflections for tonight.
Yeah, I just want to say how appreciative I am of everyone that's come out tonight, taking the time to reach out to me and the board via email, or fill out the district survey, provide feedback one way or another. I read every response from that survey, it's about 18 pages of a PDF. I've read every email, and I want you to know that the feedback is not only welcome, but impactful for me, at least personally. And I also would like you to know that the board has yet to make any actual decisions about specific programs in the budget, or positions, or investments. And as we deliberate our final decision over tonight and tomorrow, just, I hope you know that your perspective has provided a really great service to the board, so thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Curry?
So I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and, and just use this as an opportunity to say that this is really illustrative of where we are, the predicament we're in as a community. And this entire conversation is about asking more of all of us. It reflects an annual conversation we have about line item cuts. When, every year since I've been on the board, we've had one kind of cumulative pressure from our state education fund after another. And we're, we stay focused on the trees while the forest is on fire. So for me, this isn't about Alpine or golf. My son was on the Alpine team. I'm very empathetic with a lot of the experiences described here. But at the same time, you know, we have heard comments that represent two ends of our spectrum in our high school, of those who are in, those who need opportunities and are experiencing opportunities to push beyond their limits, which we all want for all our kids. So how do we all pull together as a community and ask our neighbors to push beyond their perceived limits of what they can afford for a tax increase? And I, I just, you know, would ask everybody who showed up tonight to make a commitment to be there when we have to pass a budget, because if it fails, we're going to be right back here in April, having a worse conversation. And so the task ahead of us is not about, you know, saving the Alpine team and saving interventionists. It's all of that, but it's more, the real task ahead of us is how we push our community beyond its perceived limits. And so we can do things like, you know, not cut the golf and Alpine team, but we could ask the athletic department to challenge them to raise $10,000 or $20,000 in sponsorships for all our teams. And they think, you know, we're probably at that kind of a point. But the kinds of conversations we're having just today, after meeting with the Public Assets Institute in Montpelier, you know, the, the education that I got is six cents of our tax increase is related to four dynamics in Montpelier that we have nothing to do with. So, you know, our baseline is already going out the door with an increase that is not optional, unless we were to, you know, take away even more than we're talking about. But also, just to preserve what we have, we have to go above that six cents. So I just ask everybody to try and not understand the education formula, because I know how complicated that is, but understand what Karen was saying, that we all have to get the message out to our neighbors that education is our economic development strategy, and we have to support our public sector because there's very little left of it. And the school is carrying the social services that used to be in addition to the educational fund, and now the educational fund is the social service fund for Vermont. So I'm asking everybody to appreciate that, educate yourself, talk to us about how to get a budget passed, because it's going to be imperative, no matter what happens tonight or tomorrow night, that everybody's working together on that effort.
Anyone else? Commissioner Justin?
I thought the survey was very informative. I noticed that the majority of the, it was 280 responders about, were really encouraging us not to cut anything, or at least not most of what we were suggesting. Yet on the street, what I hear is, I can't afford it. I bristle at that, and I, my goal is to, over the next month or so, is to work with homeowners that I know to explain why the budget, why we need to raise the taxes. Because many people don't believe it. What do you do, why do you need more money? You're always asking for money, what do you need now? More teachers? People don't realize that this is because of three or four situations coming at us from the state. I also want to get out and urge renters to vote. Because many people who are renters, even though their taxes, their, their rent may go up because the landlords would pass it on, a lot of them are willing to vote for the budget. I wanted to say that there was a comment about the surplus. And if that person watches last week's meeting, you'll understand what we can and cannot do with the surplus. And it's very, it's very common for people to say, but let's just cut the central office. Last year, this year, we cut it by $540,000. Last year, we cut it by about the same, is that right?
$150,000.
$150,000. So that's getting up to 800,000, almost $800,000 that we've cut it into years. And I'm not saying woe is us.
First year was $450,000.
First year was $450,000, second year was $150,000, third year.
Proposed.
Proposed $450,000, $550,000. And I'm not saying woe is us. I'm, I'm saying that we're doing our best to figure out how to, how to cut without impacting students. Now, those cuts are going to impact teachers, because when they call in and say, I have a question about, we don't always have the people there to answer the questions. And our, the person who's done our, our taxes, our audit, has said, you are really on the brink of not having enough people to keep this place afloat, the offices. So we are really trying to, I think what, the main thing we need to do, and Mark and other people have already started this, is to work with the state legislature on how we can get schools funded differently. Because right now, taxpayers are saying, many of them are saying, we're sick of this, we're not going to pay for it. I looked at my taxes over the last 10 years, and for the schools, it went from $100 to $550 for the schools. But I want to say thank you for every, to everyone for coming out. I'm getting a feeling that, that many people are beginning to understand that we're between a rock and a hard place. And we are going to, we, with your support of getting people out to vote, are going to do the best we can.
Thank you. Isaac?
I just, my comments have a lot less gravity than for Justin's. But I just wanted to thank everybody that came out, especially the students. Just because you hear Bella and I a lot up here at the school board meetings, but it's nice to hear other students in the community. And yeah, just at the end of the day, it's the students that everyone in this room is here for, so it's always nice to hear them.
Anyone else? Commissioner Serena?
So I, Commissioner Curry said a lot of what I wanted to say, and I just wanted to agree with her. And I want to just, I want to just share with you my own frustration about this, the phenomenon that we've been experiencing in the last several years. You know, typically, if people's incomes rise, they don't want to pay more taxes. And incomes have been rising, but most of that income has gone to those at the top of the distribution. And I think that that's why we find ourselves in what feels like a scarcity mode right now. It's not as if we don't have enough resources in the United States and Vermont to educate kids the way we want to. But we have a tax system and a distribution system that leads to heavily on those at the bottom of the distribution. And just to share some data with you, in 2000, when the educate, when Act 60 was put into place, 57% of education funding came from property taxes. Today, that's 67%. And that's a reason why people are feeling the burden they do. And I want to, so I, I, I want to, I share with Commissioner Curry that we need to pull together right now. I think there's often a time, during times of economic scarcity, people will fight over the crumbs. And I really encourage us to approach this collectively very differently, which we as a board have begun to do, with Commissioner Barlow organizing us to meet with legislators. And I hope that we will continue to do that and communicate with them. And I also just want to reiterate Karen Rubin's point. I think the best way for us to talk about this, and we need to find a way to talk about it to the public that is convincing about what we're doing. The testimony that we heard tonight about Alpine skiing and golf is a testimony to the fact that schools, that there, there are many things that schools do to educate a person and to build a person. And all of those investments are, in fact, investments that yield a return into the future. This is not just money spent today that is discretionary spending. And even those who have to, have to pay the heavy burden of taxes, and I am very sensitive to low-income or low-income households that have to bear this burden. But to the extent we educate kids, we generate kids who can earn a higher income in the future and can help to fund education in the future and support all of us. And I think if we change the language around which we talk about education, we may be more successful in helping people to understand why we feel like it is necessary to do the spending we're going to do this year. And I want to reiterate again, the thing that we also need to underscore is the fact that, had it not been for the challenges from Montpelier, we would not be facing any of these potential cuts. In fact, we would have been able to add more healthily to the resources of the district without the burden of this 7%, roughly 7% increase that's coming from Montpelier. So we have, in many ways, done our job as a district. And, and, and that is, we have been efficient with dollars, we have cut corners where we can. But what we, what we have to sell to the public right now is not, you know, an overspending school district, but rather the pressures from Montpelier. And I want to just urge us once again, if we can collectively move forward on this really tense period of time that we've experienced in the last few years, because I think we can get there better together than we can divided.
Thank you, Commissioner Serena. Anyone else? Seeing none, superintendent, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, thank you, Chair Porter and committee members and board. We, we do want to emphasize that, I really appreciate the comments from the board in terms of us moving forward.
Can you just hold on one second? Folks, if you want to come down here to see this, please move down behind us or bring your chair back far behind here. Please feel free to. I apologize.
Is your microphone on? It's not for.
How's that, can you hear it better? No?
It's okay.
We do appreciate the comments from the committee, as well as board members in terms of the reflections. It seems that at every moment and every turn, the board is faced with some difficult challenges. Every, every month, we're dealing with some critical piece that has an impact on our students and our community. And I hope people do really understand that we don't take this lightly, and we're doing the best we can in terms of trying to deal with the challenges that come in front of us, and at the same time, present a district that's going to be sustainable and continue to grow. I'm going to share a few things with you, with this, for me to put a bit of an agenda, because it's quite a bit of content we want to share based on the conversation we had last, last meeting. I wanted to kind of put some order to it so we could get through the information. But I think this would give the board enough context to have a robust conversation around what they feel would be appropriate to invest in and to work with the community going forward. So just quickly, the first slides, we're going to just talk about a quick recap, just to take you to in terms of where, where we started and where we are. We'll go, go through the survey response summaries. I have some comments to share with you around athletics. Then we have some tax scenario comparisons. And then there's, we'll have a presentation around intervention model review, an elementary class size review, and then some ballot language, and then we can start the conversation in terms of discussions moving forward. So hopefully, we can follow that process, then it'll get us to a place where we can have enough information to have a robust conversation in terms of making a decision. So let me take you a little bit back. So to recap, board was presented a preliminary budget that included new investments and no reductions several weeks ago, and the tax impact approached 10% and about 11% without the surplus. And then the board gave direction to me for the next step, which was to instruct, we intend to revise the budget to reduce the tax impact. And the consensus was around 7% was the rough average from board opinion. That's what, that's what we had. There were, you know, there were different numbers from, from the top to the bottom, but the average was around 7%. So we came back, provided a revised budget that trimmed investments and made other reductions, resulting in a 6.92 tax impact. Okay, so that's where we were. And conversations ensued around what was in, what was out, and what we should be supporting. And then the board asked for additional information related to reductions and expressed an interest in scenarios with a tax impact exceeding 7%. And that's where we are. And we're happy to provide you with that information. I would say one caution I do have, that some of the questions that we had last time sort of puts us in sort of a slippery slope in terms of the level of detail the board is asking for us on a number of items. That goes to sort of a line item budget process, where you're looking at each line and you're saying, what's this? That would take us forever. One of the tasks the board has mandated for me is to follow policy that you've set and to bring forward information. And we try to bring you the most informative information as possible to, to, to make you have, to make you have good decisions. And of course, the board can send us back for more information. But we really do want to encourage the board to understand that we are working at a policy level, right? And our conversations often get down to the granular, you know, sort of minute level. And that is where, you know, all of us have personal experiences at that level, right? In terms of we're in classrooms, or we're in schools, or we know our neighbor, or we know this. And that really takes us away from the board's role in terms of, at a very high level, and making an impact on the system as a whole, as opposed to individual isolated. So just, just want to throw that in there in terms of comment, in terms of how to think about moving forward. So one of the strategies we wanted to provide the board was to provide the survey so the board could have another piece of context in order to, in order to help make decisions going forward. This survey, of course, is not scientifically valid in any way, it's not a poll. The sample size of those is encouraging, because we had over 360, but the population of Burlington is like, what, 45,000 or something like that? So must keep those, those pieces in perspective. This is meant to give the board just some contextual information to think about what they're hearing from their constituents, what they're hearing from their friends, what they're hearing from staff, and to put in the context in terms of accessing, accessing this information. Of course, this is not an outreach that is inclusive to everyone in the community. Some people may not have had time or access electronic versions. We did do some outreach and got some hard copies for individuals we knew, especially seniors that we knew that didn't have access to electronics. But once again, this is not totally scientifically valid sort of approach, but to give you some, some context around that. Okay? So the first graphic you see, we wanted to get some demographic data based on age grouping. You can see the distribution there. Because I was concerned for myself in terms of, we get a lot, we get quite a few emails from seniors around their situations. And sometimes, we don't see them here at the board, at the board meeting to express their concerns. But we wanted to identify that we did reach out to that particular cohort and to hear what they had to say. So you can see they're representing the largest distribution group that you can see, is 35 to 44. And that's probably, you know, individuals who have school-aged children in our, in our system. So here. So here's another interesting slide. We tried to ask people to identify their affiliation. And it kind of differentiated from parents to residents and other. Seeing the largest group, which makes sense, would be parents of elementary students. And quite a few individuals that were willing to contribute to our conversation who were Bronson residents without children in the district and also people who were other. That could be people who were outside of Burlington. You'd be amazed, the communications we get people from all over the country sometimes contributing to what's happening in Burlington. So wanted to capture that, so you can see that bit of information. And then a bit of award representation. So Award Five, kudos to Commissioner Award Five for... We should have gave a sort of a reward or some work can get the most... Get an incentive. So you can see the distribution there in terms of the different awards. Then we get to the final, choose your best response to the question around the budget impact. And we use the 7% threshold because that was the last presentation that was presented with a 6.92. We were slightly under 7%, but that was the threshold. And if you look at the percentages, you'll be able to see that we had about 19% people who wanted to have that impact decreased. And then we had close to 30% that wanted to have it increased. And then 51% that felt that they could pay more. But really, in the communications that we receive and the numbers you see, in Burlington, we get pretty polar opposites. Often we get individuals communicating saying, cut everything, not a single increase. Then we get people saying, hey, we want to support education. We're willing to pay whatever we need to pay. And then the challenge is, we just lost our... The challenge is to have the conversations with the people in the middle, right? So I'll stop there, because that was the last slide for that. And we can have a quick comment on this and we can move to the next section.
Comments, reflections?
Based on the total responses to the questions about, would you want to pay more, would you want to pay less? Would you want to leave 57 to 58? Put it at pretty much right down the middle, 51 to 49, right?
We're working on it.
Yeah, we do have hard copies. And for our community members, as soon as we have the technology up, we'll have it posted on the board website, so you can review that. The comments were posted earlier on, so if you want to review the comments, you can do that as well. Okay, move on to the next session? I wanted to talk about athletics.
I think there was a question, I would like to see the last slide that showed the three areas.
The percentage of the three areas?
Yeah, the percentages.
You've got it.
Yeah, most likely to support.
Yeah, you've got it. That sheet I just packed.
Can you put it up there?
Someone in the audience? 70% say at or above 7.
Is that the slide you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
So I'd like to attempt to...
That's so stroking your direction. I mean, let's put this in perspective.
I thought yours was just the opposite.
No, no, but 19% said includes reductions in investments resulting in a 7% tax increase.
Yeah, so 7.
Okay. 29.5% say include more reductions resulting in a tax increase less than 7%.
I was adding up those who said, I'm okay with 7, plus those who say I'm okay with more than 7.
Chair Porter, are we having a discussion about this right now?
I just need to close that out, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close this section out. You know, I wasn't doing any sort of interpretations. I hope the board can kind of look at this and understand that this is a small sample size. And I showed you all the different sections, but for you to consider that in your thinking in terms of what you believe you can gather from this data to support your thinking around moving us to a place where we can find a tax impact that we can keep moving forward with. Am I good with this? Can I close this out? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to talk about athletics just quickly because that was on the last reductions slide from the last board meeting. And it was a nominal amount around Alpine and golf. And first I'll say that I enjoy both sports. And personally, I was a scholarship athlete and went to university through athletics. I probably wouldn't be here today if I didn't have that through my journey in terms of integrating that into the curriculum. But I think it would not be responsible if we didn't have a comprehensive review when we're looking at making reductions. We've looked at for several years now, we've made reductions in the academic areas. We've made reductions in the central office areas. But we never really looked at the athletics portion. And we've never had a conversation. I had hoped that placing an item around athletics would generate a conversation around what the value is for us in Burlington. And if that's something that we should be looking at in terms of part of the curriculum or not, right? I have my own personal views, but I thought it was important for us to consider that. I do think that athletics and extracurricular do play a role in terms of educating our students. But when you get to a situation when you have to make choices, it was interesting to see who came out and who didn't come out. It was interesting and powerful to see there were more people speaking about athletics tonight than the academic areas that we had outlined out there. And it was interesting to hear people use the word inclusion. And I don't think people use it in the right context in terms of inclusionary programs. When we look at, in particular at our high school, we talk about inclusionary programs. What's the definition of that? If you're looking at programs that are inclusive to broaden the scope of students who are participating? Or you're looking at adaptive education for able-bodied, the range? We haven't had that conversation and we need to have that conversation. I know that this year, the high school came to us with a proposal for ultimate frisbee, which they had 50 students, right? Very inclusionary activity. Anyone can join. You can have multiple teams. You can have 100 kids if you want. All you need is a frisbee. And they were looking for financial support to do that. We can do that at that point. We'll have to think about that. So I wanted to start the conversation, because I will bring this conversation back in terms of what we do in terms of in Burlington around athletics. I do feel that if we're going to have athletics in our district, it should be programs that are from the elementary to the high school that are integrated, that really represent the perspective of student athletes and support some of the values that we want to build character in education in our students. I had the opportunity in the spring, summer, to talk to former athletes from BHS who were graduating and talk to them about, you know, where are they going next year? What are they doing? And I'll tell you, for the majority of the students that I spoke to who were of color, they were, they felt displaced. And they didn't feel there was a real connection with their athletics and their academics and getting them to a place where they could be successful. Many of those students were really high performers that could have leveraged that opportunity into a pathway that could find them success. We haven't had that conversation. I had hoped that we'd have this conversation and that we didn't hit a single person that came to talk about that piece of the big picture. I am putting back Alpine and golf because it's $10,000. But I wanted to generate the conversation. And I wanted to see who would come out and what would we start the conversation around athletics. I promise I will bring back the issue around what we do in Burlington around athletics and how it collects to the curriculum. I do believe there's a connection to the curriculum. I'm a supporter of co-curricular athletics. But we got to figure out how we want to do it. How do we do it in a way that engages all our families and all our students?
Question? Chair Porter, are we having discussions as we go forward? Or should we just listen to the whole thing?
Why don't we just go ahead and say, if everybody could write down what they...
And then wave.
Say, and then we'll wait and get it all.
They comment.
Please do that.
Okay. So considering the scenarios, we'll come back to this slide at the end. But I wanted to sort of give you a framework of where we are trying to lead you to start the conversation once we presented all the information that we want to share with you. And I'll pass it over to Executive Director of Finance, Nathan Labrie, to just give us a quick thumbnail, because we're going to come back to this at the end and go through it in detail.
Right, well, I think it's hopefully pretty self-evident in looking at it. We just provided both of the kind of January 16th as the jumping off point here, the last scenario that we brought forward in response to the board request. And then we offered three other scenarios, each of which includes additional kind of buying back some of the things that we would have had to give up if we went with the January 16th scenario. So as Yael said, we're going to come back to this at the end so folks can consider it in more detail. But we thought it was important to not save it to the end of the presentation or rather give you a sense of what those numbers look like before we go into some of the more programmatic discussions.
So the next item on our agenda is to talk about the achievement gap and the intervention model. And I've got our curriculum director to give us a little bit of context in terms of the vision around where we're going and some of the steps that we're looking at in terms of moving forward. At our last meeting, the board asked for, what they really asked for was the why around what we were going to do with the six positions, what we could do with other positions. And I would say that have we not been in a situation where we're restricted by budget restrictions? We probably would have had a different presentation for you at this budget round to say, hey, we've got this plan. This is where we're going. This is what we invested. But the board directed me after the first budget presentation to go back and reduce. And we did that in three days. We had to do that in three days, so we had to do it. So we had to go back and put it forward. But now we've got, and then the board has asked for some more information. So we're hoping tonight we're going to be able to give you enough information to give you some options that you can feel comfortable about taking the next step.
So as Superintendent O'Bang just explained, this gave us an opportunity to take a step back to look at the original plan that we had for interventionists. This was a conversation that began back in 2013. And to kind of take a reflective time to look at what was part of the original plan? Where are we now? And what do we think would make sense moving forward as some options for consideration? So in the original conversations, when we first started talking about putting in the intervention model across the elementary schools, we were also having conversations about extending the school day. Because our initial research had indicated that one of the best practices would be to take no more than 30 minutes from schedules of core instruction time. And we wanted to be able to minimize that. So one of the early pieces of this plan was having conversations about actually extending the student day. We also, in those initial plans, talked about the importance of focusing on grades one through three. That doesn't mean the other grade levels are not important. But we know from the research that we get our biggest bang for the buck by putting those strategies at the early levels. And really to target students being on grade level in math and literacy, but especially in literacy by the time they reach third grade. So that again was our reasoning for focusing on grades one through three. We also know it's really important when you have an intervention model to really think about what are the universal screening tools that you can use? Because it's really important to have ongoing data that allows you to track student progress. Because one of the ideas behind an intervention model of this type is that you want those groups to be fluid. It's not something that should lock a student in for an entire semester or an entire year. But the idea is that you're always getting new data and making your decisions about students' placements and those intervention groups based on the most recent data. And then obviously making sure that you have a coherent leadership structure so that you have fidelity of implementation of any model.
Before I transfer to the next slide, one of the things I wanted to state, this approach we're looking at, and we're going to talk about it, is not about the intervention, it's not about the people. And people's often sort of mistaking that. It's not about our staff. I've seen our staff interventionists in our schools and our classrooms and get great reports from our administrators in terms of the work we're doing. It's about looking at a systemic approach around closing the achievement gap and the strategies that we want to change and move forward.
So here are some highlights of the actual reality of our implementation. So one of the things, as I mentioned, we were having these conversations starting back in 2013. We have not at any point extended the student day. So what happened was when we implemented the current intervention model, we actually took 60 minutes out of core instruction time because without extending the school day, all that time came from within the existing schedule. And so this is something that the intervention block being in the schedule, this is impacting our core instruction time for every student every day. And so that's one piece that we feel is important to look at. The other piece is that while we originally had hoped to focus on grades one through three, there have been some implementation issues that have led to some inconsistency. And so right now, interventionists are being stretched at many of the buildings to serve additional grade levels, including kindergarten, fourth, and fifth grade. We do not have the universal screening data that we had originally talked about for this model. While we did make some investment in materials to support the interventionists, we did not put forward the universal screening tools that would have given us the more real-time data that's needed as part of this. And overall, there's been some disconnect through the implementation of this in that many of the people who were part of that initial vision are no longer with the district. Many of them left soon after we implemented this model. So there has been an initial vision that just simply hasn't been realized. So if we take a step back and we think about our target with the achievement gap, and this first language comes right from what you've seen in our monitoring report. You know, we're really trying to think about how we can do the best for all students. And one of the things that we know as part of this process is trying to find a balance in what we are able to do as a system, knowing that we have some budget restrictions, hearing from teachers and administrators about needing more support when it comes to behavior and instruction. So really trying to look at all these pieces. We know there are some pieces of this intervention model that is working, and we want to capture those. But we also think there are some things within the model that need to be changed, that we need to look at differently. that we need to look at differently. And we need to look at what do we have available for resources? And how can we build a system that supports some of those tier-one instruction needs and behavior needs that we're also hearing from teachers and principals? So one of the pieces here is that we want to look at how we can create a supportive team approach. That if we're really going to close the achievement gap and be true to our restorative practices initiative, both of which in the strategic plan, then we need to look at first-best instruction for all students. And we really need to get back to protecting the instructional time that we have and look at the models that we can put in place to serve all students. So what does this look like? So we've had conversations about what, taking what we know is working really well, taking into consideration those other needs that we're hearing around core instruction time and behavior supports, and how can we put this together to try to build a system that supports all students and really develops a team approach? So what we've come up with is the reassignment of the six intervention positions that were discussed last week. We're reframing that because we will want to make some changes to our expectations and job responsibilities. So we've reframed that to call them academic achievement intervention leaders. Major focus would continue to be that differentiated tier-two support for students. And then beyond those six positions, if funded, up to an additional six positions, we want to look at that team approach. And we want to look at who are people that can help with the behavior pieces, going back to our PBIS model, looking at the people that have the social and emotional expertise, thinking about our restorative practice work. And also, we want to look at the instructional coach piece. How can we best support teachers? With the Common Core and all of the standards work that we're asking them to do, all of the assessments, all of the data that has to be analyzed, where are there opportunities to have instructional coaches that can also be part of those teams to support teachers? Some other things that we feel are important for us to consider as part of this process is to really look at the schedule and come back to a few of the pieces that we identified early on when we first talked about an intervention model. One would be to take a schedule that builds only one 30-minute block. So put back 30 minutes of core instructional time from where we are now. And really, we have to make a commitment to focus on grades one through three. And that can be difficult because there are lots of needs at lots of grade levels. But to really invest in an intervention model, we need to come back and focus on the grade levels where we know we can make the biggest change. We also need to implement procedures so that we do collect that universal data, so that we have information to know how we're doing and to have more data about how our students are doing. We certainly have benchmark assessments now, but we need to have more ongoing regular data to support the students in the intervention blocks.
Okay. Just for clarification, if people understand the concept that we're proposing here?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so we made a proposal...
But can I tell you why, so that we use our time efficiently?
Yeah.
What's the difference between core instruction and intervention instruction?
Core time is with the classroom teacher?
Right, so why put kids back in the classroom if they're not keeping pace with the classroom?
What we think based on the research is that we need more time in the classroom with teachers. We still need a support model. But we're saying, don't take time away from that basic core time in those subject areas, not more than 30 minutes. Now, we may have to look at some other pieces of models where we're asking people to go in to that core instructional time. There are lots of different models that we can look at. But what we're saying right now is that in our current model, an hour a day is taken out for this intervention time. And we think we can do things to support students by putting 30 minutes back in at core instruction and having 30 minutes of intervention.
So they wouldn't just be thrown back into the classroom without support, knowing that they don't keep up with grade level? They'd be like a push-in model where they get support while they're in the core classroom? Is that the idea?
Yeah, and I think in stepping, went through this, the original model, initially when they came up with the concept, was to extend the day where the intervention would happen now. But it didn't happen, so it happens during the instruction time. So the research says that first-best instruction talks about first-best instruction. So this strategy is to keep kids in the class and not lose that instruction time, right? And then we would look at these other supports. If the board was looking at, re-stating some of these positions up to six, what we would add to the positions. We know we've gotten really good evidence-based information from our principals around challenges around behavior, right, in order to do that. And we also know that we want to continue to build a capacity for all our staff around instruction. That's where it starts. So that's how we would utilize any additional resources to support in terms of making that change. And as I said, we were looking at making a change. We wouldn't have brought up this year because we knew the budget pieces were there. But given this opportunity, we want to look at that. And I would say that last year, I approved through HR to extend the interventions leave contract because I think it was up for two years. And I said, okay, let's extend it for one year, just in order to keep stability. Otherwise, we would have ended it last year and started to make some changes. We said, okay, let's just keep it stable for now, and we'll take a look when we're dealing with some other things that we can have moving forward.
Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
You asked if we understood the proposal.
I still don't.
Okay, so the proposal that we have here is last week, last week, we cut six. Okay, so we're going to, what we're saying is we would take that, the six remaining, we make them academic intervention leaders, right? Capture the good things that we're doing, continue to do that. But the board seemed to have a conversation around looking at increasing supports, right? So we've said, if we were to receive any additional supports, right, up to the six, this is what we would do with them. We'd use them for behavior coaches and instructional coaches into the new model moving forward. So if the board wanted to decide it in their deliberation, we gave you the scenario, said, oh, we want all 12, right? We would use six for the first half and we would use six for the unfunded half that we have there, which would meet some of the need goals that have been expressed from our staff already. All right?
Thank you.
Okay. The other area that I wanted to give some explanation on was the classroom, elementary classroom allocation. We had the three teachers there, so we thought we wanted to give you a little bit of analysis in terms of, we won't go through the whole thing in terms of the process we go through, but Victor's going to share with you some of the approaches that we use on an annual basis and then rationale around those positions.
Hi. So I think this is my, I'm in the middle of my ninth year in the district. And every year, other than my very first year when I started in the spring, whatever superintendent has been here has asked me in December to take a look at class sizes K through eight and take a look and project forward. Projection really basically simply means, assuming all the kids we have now are going to still be there the next year, we can't make guesses around that, they'd be wildly inaccurate. Think about how many kindergarten classrooms we're going to need the next year and see if there's any opportunities where we are going to need to either shift resources around. So maybe we see a bubble in a certain grade level and a lower number of teachers or kids at another grade level, and could we shift? Do we need to add? Or could we potentially reduce our FTEs in elementary or middle school and use that resource somewhere else? And so every year, that's something that I've been asked to do. And in many years, we have actually reduced the number of teachers in the district. Generally, it's at the kindergarten level. Sometimes what happens is we build it into the budget and then we don't need it. We did have one year where we did not build in the extra FTE and we ended up scrambling for those extra funds, where we got 320 kindergarteners one year. So that just sort of takes you through sort of the process of what we do. And then the last piece there, and this is something new that we've done the last couple of years, is I recommend to the superintendent a staffing allocation based on those bullets above with the addition of what's called an equity index. And so that's waiting kids who receive free or reduced lunch and EL students a little more. And so that shifts some of the resources to some of those schools more than others. So I looked at next year's enrollment and noticed that, and this happens, that there's abnormally low class sizes in 11 grades spread over the elementary schools. Now, that doesn't mean that, oh, wow, there's 11 positions you can cut. Abnormally low class sizes might be, while in kindergarten in one school we might have 22 kids, in the second grade or first grade class in that school we might only have 15 kids on average in a class. And so that's an opportunity to think about, well, could we consolidate some of those classes? So if a school has three second grades, for example, with 15 kids in each, that's 45 kids. Could we do that with two teachers next year? That doesn't mean we started the year that way, but that's where we are now. Then I look at, and this is where I really wear my teacher hat, because I was a teacher for 13 years, in K-8 schools. Is there a place where we could actually consolidate some of those classrooms and capture some of those FTEs to use for something different? Maybe within those schools, maybe cut them altogether out of the budget? That's not for me. I'm just sort of looking at where's that, where's that extra that potentially we could pull and use elsewhere? And there were seven places where we could do that for next year. But then Yao directed me to say, okay, fine, that's seven, but which are the ones that will have the least disruptive impact? So not having to do multi-age classrooms where there are none anymore, no class sizes that are too large, even though they might be allowable, that type of thing. And we came up with, or I came up with recommending three spots in three different schools in different grades where that's a possibility. And so those three schools, and these are next-year grades, not this-year grades, would be Flynn's second grade next year, SA, for the sake of this slide, because SA has done multi-age classrooms in various grade configurations over the years. I didn't play out every permutation, but one possible one is in grades two and three. And another one would be in Smith's next year, grade five. So right now, in those cohorts, assuming that this was now next year, there are 46 students in Flynn's second grade and there are three teachers. So that's a ratio of about 15.33 kids in a class. In SA's two-three combined, so this year's first, second, about 15, almost 16 kids in a class. And in Smith's, grade five, a little over 15 also. And then you see the ratios of what they would be next year if we reduced the teacher in each of those cohorts. And it shows you what the column where it says school ratio with reduction of one FTE at each school. It shows you what the ratio is right now in those schools of student-teacher ratio overall, K-5, and what it would be next year if we reduced each of these schools by one position. We also looked at the free reduced lunch, IEP, and EL status of kids in those grades to see, well, maybe these are anomalous classes. And I went and I actually looked at the full RETN tape of the last board meeting to understand what were some of the concerns that you brought up. And that was one of the concerns that was raised. And in no case is the free reduced lunch rate, proportion of kids on IEPs or EL students out of proportion with that school as a whole. So it's not like one of these classrooms has 50% of the kids on IEPs. In cases where things like that happen, generally that's where the principal, early on, is going to the superintendent, director of special ed, director of EL, and saying, I've got this wacky cohort right now, I'm going to need more support in my school. Might be an extra teacher, it might be an extra special educator, it might be a par educator. That varies, but that really isn't part of this decision-making that happens. And then, just for point of comparison, Yao had asked for looking at next year's students and looking at the, next year, looking at student-teacher ratios. So these are projections. And so you see there the student-teacher ratios next year in K-5. So as you work your way across to the top, what they would be in second grade if we make these three cuts, what they'd be in third grade, and what they'd be in fifth grade. And so nothing, again, is wildly out of whack. There's definitely some cohorts in some schools that have higher numbers than others. The general guidelines we work with in our district is no more than 25 kids in a fifth or fourth grade class, no more than 23 in the third grade class, and we try and stay up to 22 in K through two.
Any questions? I'm just walking away.
Yeah, well, we're going to...
Okay. Do you want me to stay or?
Yeah, stay.
Okay. Can't walk away.
We don't need to spend a lot of time on this, but just as a reminder to folks what the ballot language looks like, I wanted to provide it. If you weren't seeing it for the first time, when you actually vote on your budget tomorrow, the three numbers that are in yellow are purely for illustration. I didn't try to update or predict what's going to happen. You should just know that first one represents a total budget figure, which is all sorts of funds that are not limited to those dollars, impact tax rate. So frankly, I think this change by the state, well-intended, doesn't provide a whole lot of useful information to voters, but nevertheless, we're required to do it, so it will be on there. The second item, the $15,000 figure, again, just purely for illustration, but that's your education spending pre- equalized pupil. That is what drives, or one of the main drivers of tax rates. And then the last number is just showing a change in that education spending, pre- equalized pupil. It's important to note that that number won't necessarily be exactly the same as the change in your budget. There's a lot of different ways you could kind of answer a question, like what's the change in the budget? This is just specifically the way that it's required to be on the ballot. So as you folks make an actual decision about what we're going to fund and not fund, we'll ultimately put the results of that decision in this format.
Are you allowed to add language to this or not?
We, you have to have this. In the past, times we've had some additional language.
So is it, so $84,000 divided by 4,099 kids, right, is where you get $15,070?
Nope. Nope, the, right, it would seem natural. Actually, so that first number includes not only the education spending portion of your budget, but grants, transfers, other things. It essentially is like a much larger number.
Right, I got that.
And after...
But where are you getting $15,000?
Yep, so then you need to take away all those other sources until you get down to just your education spending number. And then you need to divide that by your equalized pupils, and that gives you $15,000. So there's no way with the data that's required to go on the ballot that you could connect those dots.
But I thought you said in your last presentation that we have 4,099.67 equalized pupils. So if you divide, so when do you use that as the divisor?
When you, when you have your education spending...
Which is 74.038.
I don't even think it's that, I don't have it, I can open up my laptop, but...
Well, I'm just taking this from the slides you gave us.
Right, it's not, it's even less than that because...
73.
I think that was the general...
523, if we use the 1.1.
So I can, I'll pull it up, but I'm not sure it's worth going into a lot of...
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's helpful if people understand the per equalized pupil spend because that's one of the indicators we use to compare us to other towns. And that's the amount supported by the state ed fund. So that's why, that's where my line of questioning is going.
Right.
How do we get that number?
Yeah, but what's the per equalized pupil count and has a factor into our...
The per, so the number of equalized pupils is the denominator in determining what is your education spending per equalized pupil. So first, we have to identify what's education spending. That's the total amount of money that we need from the education fund. The education fund you can think of is essentially the funder of last resort. After all of the grants that you might get, after all of the other types of revenues that you may be able to generate as a district, the difference, and it's substantial, between what you're trying to fund and all those other revenue sources, what remains is what we ask the state education fund for. That is our education spending. Think of that as being capital, you know, capital E, capital S. It's the education spending, which is then divided by our number of equalized pupils, and the result is our education spending per equalized pupil, which would be whatever number we come up with. which would be whatever number we come up with that will end up on the ballot. Anybody have another, you have another question?
Oh, but are you saying that's the number?
No. I'm saying, I just...
Oh, that's the real number.
No, that's not the real number.
Oh, you messed up, yeah. Those are just real numbers.
Right. No, no, no. I mean, we don't even know what's going to happen yet. And depend, any choice will generate a series of numbers.
Okay.
Populated the ballot language. Does anybody have another question on the language?
On the ballot language, I do. And so I'm to understand that the 15,070 bears no relationship to our actual, fair enough. When it says 0.50%, there are a lot of people who are not math literate out there. They might say, oh my God, 50% higher?
They might.
If you could use words, one-half of 1%, that's unmistakable that it's tiny. And I'm not saying that that's the right number. You just told me that's a bogus number. But if we use words instead of numbers, the meaning will be a lot clearer in our favor. Fairly so, I believe. So unless the statute prohibits it...
I have to look back. I think the statute...
Or maybe both.
But, you know, that may be a gray area, and I'd be happy to look into it further. It may also be that that number isn't as convenient as the one I use in the example. So we might be talking about 73 hundredths of 1%. Yeah, I mean, it could be a somewhat more or less convenient number than I choose for illustration.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the wording before we move on to the next page?
Just as a point of reference, I understand you made up the 84 million as sort of pulled out of thin air. Are those, is, it's all made up? Do they relate to each other?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. So like 15, 15, 0, 7, 0 isn't what it would be of the...
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the ballot language?
Okay, thank you.
Somehow I thought that would make me...
So we reached the, our last slide.
No, it did.
And so, we're hoping to, we've led you to this conversation point where we've populated four different scenarios, I guess. The January 16 budget scenario, which had, you've seen that presentation, which was 6.92. And then we've created a couple other, three other positions where we could buy back three positions, including athletics. And then the next stage is six positions, including athletics. And then finally, nine positions, including athletics. And then, of course, the board can have conversations for any sort of scenarios in between. But we thought this would give you some benchmarks to look at in terms of the conversation moving forward. And I would say the last, the footnote there, that we started with 7.81. Remember, if we did nothing, we'd be at 7.81, and then we've kind of gone old and we're back to here. So just wanted to put that in as a reminder of where we were.
I'll start down this end with some questions.
Sure. And so, all these scenarios assume no change to the enhancements we talked about at the last meeting? Okay. Great, that's good for me to know. I think that's all I have for questions. Should I comment?
Right ahead.
Well, I think I'd just like to say, I appreciate, I'm very thankful to have all this information. I find it actually quite, quite helpful and appreciate your hard work since last week to provide it. And I also welcome the conversation, a broader conversation around the purpose of athletics in our district and how we can serve everyone. I think it's no secret, I've been involved with the lacrosse program at VHS for a long time. And it's always, it troubled me in particular that I feel like we can't reach a broader group of kids in Burlington. And part of that, I think, is sports-specific. It's, there's a high investment involved in playing lacrosse in terms of equipment. And it's, yeah, I really would like to think about how we, as a district, and, you know, like outside of this role and us as a program can do better to serve everybody and make sure we're including everybody in our program. We've never had cuts, we've never had enough numbers to have cuts. We encourage everybody to come play. But we still can't, there's still a barrier that I don't fully understand and would love to have a better idea of how we can dive in to address that. So I welcome that conversation very much. And then, just, I sent around an email to board members today that referenced class sizes in particular. And it is a Brookings Institution article that sort of compiles a lot of data around class sizes and I think describes our situation very well. There's a lot of good research out there that suggests that there are benefits and there may not be as pronounced benefits. But I'm just going to read this particular section that I think applies and has really impacted my decision-making. It says, "The popularity of class size reductions may make it difficult for policymakers to increase class sizes across the board in order to sustain other investments in education during a period of budget reductions, particularly other areas of investment that may impact student achievement. But in that context, state leaders and policymakers should consider targeting class size reduction at students who have been shown to benefit most. Disadvantaged students in the early grades, providing a certain amount of funding for class size reductions, but leaving it up to local school leaders on how to distribute it." I think, I feel very strongly that if we are going to make an investment in class size reductions, and it's shown that in those cohorts, early years with disadvantaged students, significant class size reductions can make a long-term impact on student achievement. I think the three schools we're talking about tonight are the places to do, make that investment. And so that's, that's where I am on that particular sheet.
Commissioner Lo.
I am also of the feeling, for as long as, I mean, back in the 90s when we were, when I was on the board, we were trying to get class sizes down to 15. And now, you know, we're pushing them back out. And I do think that class size, especially for kids of, you know, low socioeconomic backgrounds, is probably one support that does help a lot. And I would rather see us put it, all nine positions back in. And I'm more than willing to do the legwork to go out and support that.
Can I just add just another piece of context? I probably didn't have Victor's presentation. The three positions, we wouldn't necessarily put them back into those classes. We would probably use them in terms of supporting administrators to address hotspots. You know, Victor talked about, we do this analysis, and then we let principals sort of manage their schools. And then once in a while, there's an anomaly that comes out of it. Somebody will say, hey, I have a bill challenge. And that gives us the ability to say, okay, here, here's something that you can use to... We haven't had that in the last few years because we're really tight, right? So there's no ability to really, when you get the schools saying, do we need this? There's no ability to say, here it is. So that would be my strategy if the board chose to reinstate that portion. I wouldn't necessarily just give it back to those particular schools. We'd use it in terms of our needs basis, in terms of where the needs would be. And I think our principals would be totally fine with that. We got a conversation last year, and we added extra numbers in around the equity index and certain schools we're supposed to get, and even schools that were, shouldn't have received. And they made a case to their colleagues, they said, you know what, you need it more than I do this year. You take it, even though the numbers show that they should receive it. And they were really sort of supportive of each other in terms of being able to manage those needs. So it wouldn't directly go directly to those pieces. I know those administrators in that, in those situations, they were suspecting this, right? It's not a surprise, right? As Victor says, he has conversations with them all along and saying, these are your numbers. What would you do, right? So it's not sort of a big surprise that there would be that capturing of staffing to be able to use in a different way to support elementary schools.
Are you saying those three teachers could be put in any one of the...
Yeah, we could be used, yeah. We would use, we would identify where's the most need and put them. There may not be that particular school, right? That your conversation would have with the administrators to see where the most need would be.
Any questions, Commissioner Lo?
No. I...
Commissioner, I have a question.
I guess I have more comments than questions, is that okay? And I'm very grateful for all of the work you all have managed to do on such short notice in these succeeding weeks of directions and questions from us and increasing constraints from Montpelier. And, so thank you. And I thought the conversation that kind of unfolded over Professor's comments was completely fascinating, actually. And so I'm full of questions, which really need to be saved for another day, about both what's the philosophy of the athletic offerings at the high school in particular, or the district in general, and how, what are the contributions and challenges facing participation in athletics or athletic outcomes in terms of our broader ends? That's something the board has not discussed at all in the two and a half years I've been on the board. And listening to people talk so powerfully about their experiences makes me think we should make time to have that conversation. I was, ended up feeling uneasy, I mean, even though the money is small change and to that end perhaps would just be covered in, if we manage prudently again, as you've been doing, the cost of that could probably be accounted for in a surplus that would be generated by prudent, small decisions in other areas. I felt a little uncomfortable with identifying particular teams to cut absent a larger understanding of, well, why? I mean, I know you had a reason for that, but it, I was so, so I was glad to hear about the interest in a bigger conversation about athletics. I'm still trying to make sense of the interventionist. It still feels a little counterintuitive to remove interventionists, although I hear you on the need to reorganize. Like, I am, I can see clearly the value of looking at how the interventionist model works, but I'm still struggling to understand why those people and their skills would not be useful in achieving our ends. So I'm still a little fuzzy on that. I'll stop.
Thank you. Commissioner Seguino.
I'm digesting a bit, and I think the discussion around interventionists I'm still grappling with. And I wonder if it would just be possible to email us Stephanie Phillips' presentation? That way I can kind of ponder this a bit more because I think what you described to us is a new model. And I just want to go a little bit more. So if we could get that now, that would be helpful.
Can I say remember one other thing I wanted to say that I forgot?
No, sorry. Sorry.
Because I'm always thinking bureaucratically. I'm also really mindful of trying to be clear about what is our role, like all of these things, whether it's what's the philosophy of the athletic department, or what's the interventionist model, or what's the appropriate way to handle particular class sizes in particular. I mean, like, there's both a big philosophical or, you know, there's a big philosophical framework about all of those things, and then there's the very particular decisions about, are we, you know, funding a team to go to five meets or four or six? I mean, like, there's a whole host of decisions. And I'm also struggling a bit with what is the role of the board and who needs what kind of information to, for us to play our role? We can't work out all of these philosophical frameworks and logistical things between now and tomorrow. I mean, no school board anywhere in Vermont can do that. So some of this stuff, the details of which, the details can be worked out later because what we really need to decide by tomorrow is what's the big number? We're not, we're not fine-tuning line items at the same time. We are sending a message to the community, and we need to figure out what's the story of this budget and how are we going to sell it, which necessarily involves having some understanding of some of, at least the big categories of line items. So I'm struggling a little bit with how to articulate our job here tonight.
Can I just make a comment on maybe that might help people's thinking around some of the items as well, too? Because we are getting pretty granular around, and it's hard to make a decision when you have short time, philosophically. And I know one of the concerns people have had is around class sizes and maybe for supports or for schools that need it. And we've used the standard from the AOE in terms of the class, which will, that's, they went through a conversation and some research and decided certain numbers. The board has never given any directive or put any policy that said, we want to reduce class sizes to 15 or, so that would change our practice, right? And so that's what I would be looking for. Absent of that, we would bring forward what we think is appropriate, right? But if the board said, you know what, we want elementary schools to be at 16 and 1, then okay, then we'll start looking at how we organize our budget to ensure that we have that capacity, right? But that maybe gives a little bit of context in terms of, you know, board's role and direction. Absent of that, there is, there is anything for us, for us to sort of make our decisions based on what we know from the AOE and our research and our teams in terms of making decisions and bringing it forward.
Commissioner Wick.
Oh, I appreciate that. Where are we going around?
We're doing what, please, just your turn.
Oh, I've still been preparing.
You're on.
I don't think that's fair to skip everybody.
I'm not skipping anybody, I'm not. I asked her, I asked, I asked Commissioner Curry if she would write the pass and go over to the other end, rather than if she could keep it to two questions or not, she could go now. She said, pass to the other end.
Do you want me to go?
Just, so you're not ready?
I was mentally prepared.
All right. Commissioner, please.
Thank you, sir.
I had a, I had a, I guess I, I'll start. I had a clarifying question around the intervention strategy when it was described as what the intention of the original intervention plan was. It was trying to focus on the grades one to three, but that we had been unable to achieve that. But yet, the interventionists are, they're working in the schools and they're serving all the students in the schools. So under that model, if there was a student needed support who was in grades four and five, how would they get those supports? And I think currently, they're probably getting them through the interventionists that are in the schools.
We do have special educators, we have EL teachers, and we have other staff that we do construct. But once again, if we want to focus our energy and really target critical areas, and we know the research says by grade three, that's the time frame, right? Because when you start kindergarten, kids come in different ranges. And districts that have found success, they've really been able to pool their resources and say, this is where we're going to put our money. Yes, we could go, we could go from K to 12. There's needs everywhere. But how do you sort of conserve your effort and say, this is where we're going to go? And then we'll be able to measure and say, grade three, we started here, where are we? And if we need to change the strategy after that, we'd be able to do that. But at some point, we have to, we have to decide to say, we're going to focus our energy here. There's always needs. Like, you know, I can talk to an administrator and they're going to say, my grade six really needs this, or my grade five. I think at every grade level, you're going to see there are needs. But we have to come up with a systemic approach that we're going to be able to have the mechanisms that we're going to be able to measure and the kind of supports. And also it helps in terms of capacity, in terms of training our staff to do that work. I believe that's the strategy we need to do in order to see a systemic change across all grades, right? Right now, there are good things happening, but they're happening because in that particular school, we've got this great person who's working with this person or that, but it's not an approach that's clearly sustainable. And it does make challenges for us, but we do want to develop plans because then we're looking at a sort of a hodgepodge. Because it's like, okay, we want to add this to the resource and meet, but they already got two, and they only have one, and they've got this. And then, so we're playing that game and trying to balance it out. We need to get to a level playing field, and then we can kind of add the equity needs based on what's needed within the district.
Can I go ahead, Alan? And so I appreciate that you've given us a menu of options with percentage increase and corresponding reductions in reductions. And that's helpful to me, so thank you for that. But I had this other question I was thinking about today when I was pondering all of this. And that's, that's around... and that's, that's around, we know that if we don't pass a budget, if we pick a number that isn't, is too high, and that we can't get support in the, in the community for it, eventually we'll have what's known as a default budget, right? And have we done any calculation on what the default budget would be? Because I think that would also represent an increase of some size.
I can, I, I was having a conversation about this earlier tonight, and I'm happy to come back with some additional information. I haven't gone through and done that, and it should be clear, default budget doesn't happen just because your budget failed, it happens if you begin the next year without, the next fiscal year without a budget. So, if, for whatever reason, a budget doesn't pass on town meeting day, it doesn't mean that, you're, you're not just choosing between what you put on the ballot and the default, you have other opportunities to potentially go back to the voters and try a second or third time, or however many times it takes until you run out of time, and then the provision and charter is there to ensure that you at least have a spending number to guide, to guide us in the, in the next fiscal year.
Is it conceivable, though, that the default budget number, whatever it might be, might need to be higher than some of the numbers presented?
Of course, it was certainly conceivable, I haven't actually looked at, at what it is, and it's, the default budget, as I was mentioning earlier, is, it's calculated on a slightly different number that used to be, that the base, the base rate, or the base spending number, rather, that is no longer part of the current calculation of tax rates, but that number is still calculated, it's used for a few other things that go on kind of the bowels of this process.
Right.
So, it is something that I can do, I just need to go back and do it.
I wouldn't want to, I certainly under, all the work you've been doing to prepare all of these budget changes.
I mean, well, I can have it tomorrow, it's not very taxing.
It would be helpful to us, because it's definitely one of the possible outcomes.
Yeah, that's true. Commissioner Johnson? Or pass, we can come back to you, too.
Come back to me.
Okay. Commissioner Clavon?
Well, I was going to write this down, but I think, I think I've got it. Going off what Commissioner Barlow just said, does that mean it's possible that we could fail, that we could fail a budget and keep failing, and the default budget would have a pretty high tax impact anyway?
Yes.
So, people that vote it down because they want their taxes lower may not get that.
It's possible.
Okay. Okay. And I had a question about the lower class ratio, student teacher ratio in the classroom. We are getting pressure from the governor to make, to make those class sizes increase, correct? And is that coming in the form of sort of punishment, no or not? Well, overall, but it's not the classroom size. It's a ratio, but it's not.
It's, it's a ratio, the, well, we had said this at the beginning of the budget process, that they've been signaling around reducing class size and staffs, staff to student ratio.
Right, right, overall staff.
Sizes. They haven't put forward anything official yet, but they've been signaling pretty hard that something is going to happen at some point in terms of looking at, looking at that, and you know, you have classes, not, not here, but in other parts of Vermont, that, you know, classrooms, multiple classrooms of like four or five kids, right? And schools of like fifty, and things like that, so that adds to the, the little numbers. I wouldn't be surprised if at some point, we got a directive, and it said, you know, "You need to have this ratio," and it's going to save X amount of dollars, right? And the challenge that we have is that, you know, often, this comment someone made today around we're making cuts, but one of the things that people probably miss is that over a period of time, if you haven't right-sized, you know, let's say eight years ago, and then you just keep, you know, adding, because you're in good times, and then now someone says you need to get down to the right size, right? To get down to the right size means taking out a significant number of bodies, where if he had done that incrementally over, it'd just be a small margin, and I find that that becomes a challenge for us, you know, so trying to get down to the right size means a huge amount of reductions, where, that we've been sort of a little bit more disciplined along the way, it wouldn't be a significant, people say, "Okay, that's not bad, you can manage that kind of change." But for us, sometimes we're going down, and it's a significant change for our staff, because all of a sudden, if you have, you know, a significant change, you can feel the difference, right?
Anything else, Karen?
While she's thinking, you brought up the ratios. Last week, we had the slide up there with the elementary, middle, and high school ratios, okay? And people had really good conversations around that, and I was waiting for someone to say, "Hey, look, look at the high school ratio, seventeen to one in elementary is twenty-two," right? And we know, in research, that elementary is an area we want to invest in, right? We didn't bring that forward as a strategy for a number of reasons. One is that we're right now in the process of looking at scheduling at the high school, so we didn't want to destabilize that process. But one could think, "Hey, look, look at your system, there's an imbalance here," where, you know, you have smaller classes at the higher end than the lower end, so that's a consideration for us to think about, what we need to be doing in terms of right-size in the different levels, right? So, I understand the concern around the elementary, I have those concerns as well, too, because I noticed that, I was expecting someone to say something and say, "Why is it that?" But no one kind of, kind of picked up on it, but that's something that, we were not in the same situation, I may be bringing something forward and saying, "We need to really address this in some way."
I'm just going to say right now that my heart wants to say we should buy back all nine positions, but I'm very concerned about going over the eight percent threshold. But in the end, it's like a forty-seven dollar difference to someone's tax bill. Increase difference, so.
Depending on the home loan.
Yeah, depending on the home loan, so, it's, yeah, that's all.
Isaac.
Question.
Join us.
This might just be because of my lack of budgetary knowledge, but when you're referring to athletics in that table, is that referring to only the numbers you talked about with the golf and Alpine? So then, based on the, and they might be incorrect, but based on the public comment numbers that people brought up, those are like marginal percentages, correct?
The, the dollars contributed to Alpine and golf?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, it's a marginal percentage of the, so, as a, like, for the voter, budget-wise, like, it might affect the spending and where it's spent within the budget as a whole, but when it comes to town meeting day, the number that the voter is looking at budget-wise isn't actually going to be affected by that athletics, that little addition of athletics in that, like, what you're buying back.
Yeah. It's, that's, it's like twenty thousand dollars, so it's not significant.
Yeah, I guess that's just my question, then, like, when you're on town meeting day, when the voter goes, and it's like, "This percent increase," if that number isn't going to change based on whether we keep those athletics or not, then what is the drawback, I guess, or, like, what is the reasoning behind, I know we have to, like, cut dollars somewhere, but if it's that marginal of a percentage point, then what is the reasoning?
It's back in the number, we're putting the athletics back in.
Yeah, so I guess, just in general, like, yeah, I know.
So, if I could, if I could maybe restate it?
Yeah.
If, how many cents would somebody's two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand house go up if?
In taxes.
In taxes?
Oh, if you took the athletics out, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, if you took it out, how many pennies would they save?
It just, like, it, the way that that table is worded, and like, this is-
Table's for us, that's not going to be-
Yeah, no, I know, but just, just, like, it, it makes it seem like athletics is like a big, I know that maybe it's been put back in now, but it makes it seem like athletics is like a big part of those, like, I don't know, that was, that was my only concern, it just, it seems like the nine positions and athletics are at somewhat of the same level, but, but not at all, so.
Right, in terms of finance.
Yeah.
Right.
That was-
Right, we can use a smartphone. But we just wanted to make sure that people knew that we were putting back in.
You all set, I think?
Yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Wick?
Thanks. Chair Porter, I appreciate it. I do have a lot of thoughts about interventionists and how we ought to be using them, not going to get into that tonight. I have a lot of thoughts about class sizes at the elementary level, yeah, not going to get into that tonight, are both very important topics, same thing with the athletics. I, I am concerned, though, statistics, we have to be very careful about how we use them. When, when we do say that, well, let's, let's look at the high school, seventeen students per teacher on average, I think it's a report we can relatively easily run, but I really do think we all need to know, and I want to know, each and every class at BHS, let's look at those numbers, because I think in the core classes, we're not at a low student-to-teacher ratio, so there may be some on the margin programs or classes that are low, and that drags our overall average down, and therefore it makes it like the high school's a, perhaps a target for further teacher cuts, but the bigger problem at the high school, which I think is going to be exacerbated by eliminating one-third of our PE capacity, i.e. one teacher out of three, is that the inability for, for, for many kids to get full, full, full schedules, and/or to have enough sections of certain, what I'll call core courses at every level, to have legitimate demand satisfied. I know you've been working on a lot of other things, but I've been asking the same question for a long time, can't we look into it? Chair Porter was kind enough, and I thank you sincerely for that, to put it on our agendas, on the list of potential future agenda topics, it's been there for a long time. I asked a few days ago about getting me some class sizes. I'm concerned about the elimination of the gym teacher, because I have heard anecdotally, and maybe Isaac, who's a student, can help me out, that it is hard to fulfill your gym credit sometimes, hard to get into those classes, just too many students, and I, I see our steer back there saying, "Yes, absolutely." Hard to fulfill your gym credit, and so I think we really need to, and I'm not going to tell you right now, put back the gym teacher, that's not really our role, but if we're passing a full budget, I think before we cut a gym teacher, we really need to do some analysis and understanding of how hard is it for these students to fulfill their gym credit, and I understand the compensating factor is that, yes, maybe now more liberally, you'll be willing to offer them a half a credit for participation in varsity sports only, I don't know if it's JV two, but it ought to be, in other words, I'm concerned, and I remain concerned, about our capacity to provide students with the classes they need at the high school, and further to that, as you know, we're funding a wonderful project called the Burlington Lake Semester, or some similar topic, but I want everybody to know that, and I hope, we're replacing the two teachers that are being taken away from the regular instruction. We're losing four sections of capacity in our English department, and four sections of capacity in our history department because of the wonderful teachers, and I mean that, who are doing this Lake Semester, and so, I, I'm hoping that we have it in the budget to replace those eight sections, so that it's not a net loss for this wonderful, you know, as a result of this wonderful program. I think it's worth a conversation and better data at the board level to understand this, so that we can attempt to quantify this, and get, get over that hump if there is a problem, and if there isn't, you all can tell me I was wrong, but right now, there's just no data except for anecdotal building up upon itself, anecdotal data that tells me there is an issue, and so I hope you'll be very careful when you allocate the resources in the budget that we pass, not to be too quick to cut that gym teacher if it's going to cause those problems we're talking about, and I thank you for, for listening to me.
So, just quickly, two things, one, the numbers that we showed before at the high school was, we showed you a range from seventeen to one to twenty, twenty-one to one, now from each department in terms of averages, so, there's, I forget which, which department had the seventeen to one, but there's another one with twenty-one to one, so it ranges there, and in terms of the phys ed and the other areas, those implementation challenges, we do have some contingencies to ensure that we can deliver that, if we can't do that, we're only going to capture those dollars in the school, so the school is well aware of that, and there are numbers that they have to go through if we're going to subscribe to this new model, but we're, we're well aware of that, like, you know, we have to be prepared if it's going to be able to be implemented, if not, we have a backup in order to resolve that.
Thank you. There's one more comment, if I, if I may, and it regards what appears to me, and I, as you all do, I try to do my homework by speaking to those inside the schools, and by, you know, mainly speaking to those inside the schools, and, and I'm worried that if we operate at too high a capacity utilization, meaning we don't have enough give in the system, so that every year, we're operating so tightly, so that, yes, if we possibly can cut three teachers, elementary school teachers, let's cut them, you know, I, I think that's, I got to think, that we could reallocate, just as you in fact suggested, instead of cutting them, if marginally, we don't need them exactly where they were in a given year, can we reallocate them to where they're truly needed? Because I know the need is there, and I, and I think each year we have these teacher cuts, is very traumatic for the whole morale of our school, and I just think philosophically, where I am, I'll admit to the public, we cannot operate on too narrow a margin, there needs to be a little give in the system, it's like an engine operating on very little oil, you know? We need to have enough extra so that the engine is, is well-oiled and working well, so that would be my thought on, on the point.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Curry?
Thanks.
Get comfortable.
Thanks. So, so I have a bunch of questions and then comments, is the athletic director full-time or part-time?
Director?
The director?
The athletic director.
Full-time.
And then do we have a part-time staff person on top of that?
Yeah, as an assistant company.
Okay. So, I'll just say that I absolutely agree with you, we've needed a reorganization of the athletic curriculum for years, so, thank you for raising it, I'd like to see that be a priority, I know you haven't had time to address that particular fire, but, you know, Howard Smith went down this path, too, and I think, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to say to the athletic department, "We'd like you to go find fifteen or twenty thousand dollars in sponsorships across the board." Like, don't make it team-specific, but make it a challenge, and we have this whole philosophical issue about whether we should, like, advertise, take advertisements or whatever, I mean, I just think we're at the point where we have to leverage the incredible community support for, you know, our students, that I think we could find from, you know, golf corporations, or wherever, so that's just my personal feeling. Was the seven-point-eight-one percent before making new investments or reductions inclusive of the surplus or not?
That was inclusive of the surplus.
Okay, thanks. I bet, and athletics, too, I think a long-awaited conversation is a model with the city where we merge functions there, because athletics is not a required, is not required by the state, and so I would, you know, ask us to look at the case to be made that it's not direct educational spending, and so, like Essex, there's a model for municipal, joint municipal, school district administrative cost sharing. So, back to that, I, I had the same question as Mark with the four or five grade level, would there still be, so if interventionists were more directed towards the K through three, and I'm also, I'm a, I'm assuming there's two things going on, one is pre-K will start to make the kids who are staying at grade level more, will create more kids staying at grade level, because the pre-K program will support them, right, entering kindergarten, so I'm making that assumption, but tell me if I'm wrong, and number two, it seems like there, pre-K, is pre-K expected to help kids enter school ready to learn? So, is the premise that then they will be able to stay at grade level better than they have if they don't get pre-K?
Well, that is the premise, that is the whole research in terms of pre-Ks supposed to be for the grade one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the whole idea.
So, we do expect to see cohorts coming in who are-
Better.
Better, better prepared to learn, the theory being that they may, or may need less of the differentiation we've needed.
And there is data to support that in jurisdictions that have done the pre-K model for an extended period of time.
Yeah.
Their grade ones.
So, I'm not, I'm not going to make any, I don't make any assumptions, I don't draw any conclusions from that, I just-
Just say, yeah.
It's contextual, right? So, at the same time, it just seems to me there's still a little bit of a cohort for those kids in grades four and five, who if they didn't have interventionists and they're not at grade level, what's gonna, what's the strategy for them? not at grade level, what's gonna, what's the strategy for them? Is there a strategy for them or not? I don't need to know what it is, I guess, I just need to know that there is a strategy, there is, differentiation seems to me the key, am I right, in all of this? No matter what strategy we use, we're trying to differentiate. So what, how, are we going to be able to differentiate in the four or five levels? Or maybe four, five, six, because in seven, we're supposed to go to proficiency-based learning for differentiation, right? So what happens in grades four to six, is there a strategy?
You know, if we take and say the interventionist, our priority grades are one through three, then we're going to have to look at what other resources, and it won't be the same, because we're either making one through three a priority or not. So we'll have to get creative and we'll have to look. Some districts that make one through three a priority really partner with their after-school programming to make sure there are additional academic offerings geared toward fourth and fifth grade. That's not a perfect solution either, but we're going to have to really go and look at what other opportunities we can provide to fourth and fifth graders that are not meeting standards outside of interventionists. And in theory, just as you mentioned, you know, the concept that pre-K should eventually have kids ready for kindergarten, or more students ready for kindergarten, eventually, by putting our time and energy and other resources into grades one through three, we should get to a point where we have fewer students at fourth and fifth grade that are struggling. But that will take time, and in the meantime, we'll have to see what other resources exist that we can use to support fourth and fifth graders.
And so I guess, yeah.
Can I just add to that, the, in the model here, the proposal around the behavior and instructional coaches, that's a stretch up, so we're looking at including the middle schools as well, where currently we don't do that, right? So that's a resource that we now, we can capture that gap piece that we're not supporting, concentrating on the one to three, because that's our, that's our main priority.
Right.
But then we can stretch with these areas to support, because that's where we're finding the most challenges around the first behavior coaches, and also continue to develop the capacity for staff.
Okay. So that was kind of my next question, is if there's only going to be six at the elementary school level, at the one that grades K through three, one, how would those be deployed? And so then my other question was, with the behavior and instructors, how would they be deployed? And then my other question is, what's the difference between instructional coaches and academic interventionists?
So interventionists work directly with students, instructional coaches work with teachers. Now, they might go into a classroom and co-teach a lesson or model something, but they are working directly at the teacher level.
Okay.
And what was the question?
Deployment. So how would the six be deployed, and then how would the, for K through three, and how would the six be deployed for behavior?
I think that's one of, that's one of the things we'd have to kind of talk about, depending on the level of support. We don't know if the board's going to come back and say, yeah, we're going to support up to four of those, or three of those, we're all six. So we would, you know, deploy them based on the resources that we do have in terms of being able to support those schools.
Okay, thanks. Okay, and then the conversation with Victor about all the classroom sizes at the elementary school, what's hard for me is, to get a handle on, is kind of the assumptions around, how many instructional adults are in the classroom of such a large size? If we're going to have twenty-three kids, you know, what are you working with for instructional adults in that room?
So, I mean, I would say that that varies in each school and each classroom. So if we step back to those three classrooms that I talked about, we're not, we're not suggesting, I mean, if we were in really dire straits and we're cutting, then we just cut them, right? But we're at the point now, we're saying, like, could we keep those FTEs in, but look at using them differently? So even if we, so if we were to keep them, and there were some teachers who came up to me afterwards and said, it's random that they're there right now, that might not be the best place to utilize them, right? There's, as I said, there's eleven classrooms in the district that have normally low class sizes. Conversely, there's certain schools across the district in certain grade levels that are at the much higher level, like close to those MACs. Maybe some of those ones are at the MAC level, student performance is through the roof, we've got the resources we need, maybe not. Maybe there's a different classroom with low class sizes where we need to put another adult. But just to say, well, this teacher's always been there, so we're going to, or that position's always been there, so we're going to keep it there, that doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. And so that's when I was referring to that, the conversation that a principal would have with Stephanie, or with Laura Nugent, or with Miriam, or with Yao, that's at that more granular, school-based level.
So that's the fluidity.
Yeah, yeah. So there's not, I can't, Liz, I can't answer you, like.
Yeah, no, I get it.
How many, I don't know how many people are in that room now, and I don't know how many Graham might have in his school next year.
But your assumption is that you have instructors to be able to allocate where you need them, when you need them.
Right. I mean, they might be general power educators, again, it might be a push-in EL teacher, special educator, I don't know.
And are there classes where there are twenty-three kids for one adult in the room?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have plenty. We have, at IA right now, I think it's the fourth grade, there are twenty-four in a class. IA, by the way, has the highest class sizes in the district. They have a waiting list every year in all the grades.
And we're seeing the biggest gap, the biggest achievement gap at IA.
I would say there's comparable achievement gaps at multiple schools. The achievement gap is just as big as champagne.
Yeah. I guess when you look on the AOE website data, that data is very different. It shows, it shows a pretty different achievement gap picture than the one I hear from, we're having these conversations. So that's a little hard to not have consistent data. So on the class sizes, Victor, you said you use the weighting, weighting formula for ELL and FRL?
An equity index, yeah. And that's a way to look at.
Are you using the weighting formula that the state uses, the 1.2? Or are we using a different one?
No, we're talking about our equity index in terms of allocating. We showed you that in one of the slides.
Yeah, okay, I just want to be sure.
But we do that as a school, not on the class level, not, we don't look at, like, second-grade cohort at Flynn. We're looking at Flynn as a whole. And so based on the demographics in their school, other than the base allocation of looking at, you know, twenty-two to one in K2, twenty-five to one in 3.5, that could be what you look at. Okay, so then you look at, in reality, could that even work? Because sometimes that can't work, so then you have to bump it up potentially. But then it's also, well, yeah, but with the equity index, they really should have another teacher. Now, obviously, the more teachers we have at the elementary level, the more there are in that pool through the equity index.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to mention that I believe one of the messages coming out of Montpelier is actually the number of students per employee.
Employees.
Which is, like, four per one, which, it'd be interesting to know if we achieve that or not. I suspect we do, but. So I just want to make a few comments about overall, you were asking about why no one mentioned the high school class sizes as lower than elementary schools, and I just want to share that my impressions from conversations with students, including our student reps for two years, and from teachers and others, are that, in all honesty, candidly, the high school appears to me disorganized as far as scheduling and class size allocations. Some students experience a much higher student-to-teacher ratio without enough seats in the room, and other electives sound like they're at the fifteen-to-one level. It sounds like loss of teachers in various departments from cuts over the past few years, and reorganization of subject matter has changed class sizes and reduced the ability to fill schedules. It sounds like study halls are not productive in the current configuration, but I'm not in the position to think for you. I don't have a degree in education, I don't know, you know, really what's behind all of this. I'm just curious whether these impressions are accurate, if public perception's accurate, or if it's not, and if it's not accurate, how do we get the full picture? How do we, you know, evaluate what we hear and these impressions I get against what's really behind all that? I don't need an answer to that now, I just want to share with you why I didn't ask about class sizes at the high school, because it's really hard to figure out what's going on. And it seems to be in flux, and, like I said, it seems to be disorganized. So I think it'd be helpful if, like, my overall direction of the budget is not to support many enhancements unless they're needed for compliance. I think we can find other resources for the Makerspace. It doesn't seem like that's a curriculum-based decision. It seems like that was, that's a nice-to-have. We're, the city's getting a lot of money from SIRS as part of the deal, there's a grant fund in there for the schools, it seems like we should just let Edmonds Middle School know we'll be going to SIRS for that grant for the Makerspace. And, you know, I just can't in good conscience support, Edmonds has the biggest achievement gap between non-reduced lunch, non-free and reduced lunch and free and reduced lunch, not even talking about ELL, but just the big gap in the income-based achievement gap, to me is a bit concern, is a lot concerning, and I feel like there's a lot of resources in that school and a lot of people with the ability to raise money in this community, and I know that they've already raised a lot, and I appreciate that, and I know you gave them a challenge and kind of gave them a promise, but I don't feel like we're in the position to honor that this year. Makerspace isn't time-limited, I feel like we can put that off a year, especially when we're looking at, you know, athletic cuts that really make a difference in kids' lives. So I just want to share that some of those enhancements I wouldn't support when we have kind of these other, this backlog of things that appear to need attention from a purely instructional stance. So that's my priority, is not to lose instructional positions and to cut enhancements.
Let me go around the room and see if anybody else.
I don't have a turn yet.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm going to be jumping around here, because I wrote down notes throughout people's conversation, but first I'll start with the news alert, that maybe some of you know that Rochester High School has closed.
Yeah.
Because it only had three students.
Oh, really?
Today. Today, yeah, yeah. I still don't yet understand the new model for interventionists, but I'm not going to even ask questions about it, because it sounds like there's a lot of fluidity based on need. I would want to keep the bodies, whether or not they were interventionists or not. I wouldn't want to cut those positions. I understand that we're using the AOE's class size average, but I wonder how the AOE used Burlington's population in making their decisions, you know, the twenty-two in kindergarten, were they looking at that for the rural schools? Or did they look at the different demographics when they made that decision? And I understand, I think I understand why BHS is seventeen-to-one ratio, and the reason I didn't say anything about it was because I know that some of the classes are, you know, eight, nine, ten, and some are twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, isn't that correct, at high school? Some are twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, but then you get the ratio, I mean, the average of seventeen-to-one, no?
I'm pretty sure we don't have any classes that high. We are in the state to come to the board to talk about the high school and the course selection and insurance information, but not today, but.
And I think I heard, Liz, you say that the state doesn't require gym for the high school, but it does.
Athletics, the athletic program. It requires phys ed, but not the athletic.
Phys ed, 1.5, yeah. Right, no, right. I understand what you're saying.
The entire athletic program.
If I were to choose one of those right now, I'd go with five back nine positions in athletics. And I don't have any questions, I don't have any questions.
I got a couple of questions, just a second. Actually, Steph and Victor, you're going to have to speak up here in a second. So, a couple of statements, I completely agree that grades one through three are the most important, because we know it's the most cost-effective, too, right? And actually, it's our only opportunity to teach them reading, right? Fourth grade, let's not talk, right? Yeah, are all the investments included in these numbers?
Yep.
The, you know, a quick note on the failed budget, failed budget does much more than what you think, right? So a failed budget, the employees don't feel valued, the leadership doesn't feel valued, and the voters don't feel like they're getting value. This is a bad thing. This isn't just a little thing that we work through and keep testing the waters, see what are they going to give us, what are they going to give us, what are they going to give us? It is huge harm to what we work for. I'm sure I can all these things out. Steph, the cost of the universal screening tools, I didn't see that included, I don't really want to put any, any interventionists in place without having those tools necessary, you know, we've got to learn from our mistakes.
Right.
And I'm not saying, you know, how much is it going to be, something like that, but is that even, when we look at this and say, hey, look, if you bring in, if you keep, even with the six that we have, we still have to add some money, and it may be minimal, it may be, may not be, right? And I know it's not just software, but it might be process discovery, it might be a lot of other things, right? What are your ideas on that?
I'm prepared to do that within my existing funds, so that's not an additional cost here.
Right. Steph.
Cutting my budget?
Steph, again with you, and I got to ask you, and I certainly don't want to pin you on this, okay? But you can just help me if this is going to.
Sure.
You have X number of kids with X number of needs, those needs somewhere along the line require so many minutes of support, it's, right? And you develop a loading, you develop an employee loading for that to do, to provide that support, right? Not just two FTEs per school.
Sure.
The chance of that being correct, that two FTEs per school meets all the needs perfectly at those skills, I gotta say is slim. And I don't want my economics professor over here to jump on me on this one, but let's just say that it was, somebody felt good about this in the past, it said two per, right? Is there any chance of better understanding how this is, you know, because quite frankly, it's a big deal if you only need nines, right? Or if you only need eight, we have to provide transportation, I'm hypothetical, you understand that, right? But I mean, has that kind of thing been done on these needs for when we say, you know, we know that each, each one of these interventionists over a period of a day, we expect them to spend four, thirty, they're going to take care of eight students, again, I'm just grabbing, at thirty minutes each with travel time, so we're going to say that we want them to take, we're going to have four hours of effort there per day. How often does a student need to be visited each week? Is it multiple days, is it once a day? So, I mean, are there any rules to this, as to sizing this correctly?
Right, so there's a few things. I mean, first of all, most models at the elementary level that we're talking about right now would say an every day, you know, so that you don't have gaps, so that you would serve as students every day. As far as getting at the staffing piece, I mean, we look at, we look at a lot of academic achievement data, but if we were to try to look at how to match that up to rethink the staffing numbers, you know, I don't know what the answer is, because we'd really have to look at the data.
I didn't expect you to have one.
And we have to dig really deep, and we'd have to figure out within those grade levels, we'd have to dig deep enough to say, okay, if grades one through three are our priority, then we're really going to have to look at what are the specific skills? Like, we'd have to get a really narrow focus to then be able to trace that data if we wanted to start saying, okay, this is going to be our focus, and look at minutes per day, minutes per week, try to look at staffing, look contractually at travel time and prep time and all those pieces. So there'd be a lot of variables, we have not done that level of analysis.
Fair enough. I'm just.
Yeah, there's so many variables that go, all our schools are different sizes, they have different needs, you look at Flynn and look at.
Oh, yes, but you're not reflecting that and saying two each.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, in terms of the distribution, we have to look at that in terms of caseloads, right? Because they're not all.
So I'm not questioning the need interventions.
No, no, I know what you're saying.
At all. I'm just, I'm not going to be.
No, it would really force us to look at a set criteria for caseloads and then figure out the staffing from there. So it would definitely be an approach we have not taken.
Victor? I got to, I got to, so I pulled up last year's enrollment data from, okay? Whether these are right or wrong, I just want to give you some examples, and just ask you how you handle something like this. Right across the board, first through fifth, are the lowest enrollments are at SA, okay? But then you get stuck with something, so how do you handle a twenty-three-student fourth grade? Without either. how do you handle a 23 student fourth grade without either having a 23 student fourth grade or an 11 and a 12?
You have a 23 student fourth grade, which is totally normal.
Okay. What about a 27, 27 student fifth grade? And these may not be right-
Right.
So let's forget it's SA. Let's say you get more than 23-
No, we did multi-age classrooms there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
In fact, I think at SA what we did that year is we had three teachers for those kids. So just do that math there. 27 and, what'd you say, 23?
27, so it was 50.
50 kids, three teachers. That's 17 in a class. That's lower than any kindergarten in our whole business.
Yeah, you gave me the right answer, right? So I know we, I think we're still at four or five, four or five combined at Champlain from two years ago.
Yes, this year, yes.
From two years ago, we're still there?
Yep. And we do some multi-age at Edmonds as well in 3, 4.
Okay. So, and I was just curious to see what you did, this was, these, some of these cohorts, first grade at SA is 33. I know you don't have a 33 in the class, but it may be 16 and a 17 or five.
That's what it is, yeah.
Right, that's what it is. So you do, I mean, just nurturing that a little bit is just really important. But you could have a small class, you could have that same instance happening at a better performing school, at an Edmonds or a Champlain, who could end up with smaller class sizes than the IAA or the SA, just simply because of the quality of birth that year, six years earlier.
Well, or what happens is we think we need three kindergartens at a given school. We have capacity to build it in and we get 51 kids in that school. So that's 17 kids in a class. It's too big to have, be two classrooms, right? Because that would be 25 in kindergarten, 25, 26, so we do three. And then the next year, it stays at 51 kids. We still need three. Once we, our, our numbers, as you move up in each grade, each year do this. We lose some kids, we gain some kids. It's very rare that if a cohort starts at 51, it's gonna suddenly get to 65. And that's what's tough. So when you have relatively small schools, which we have throughout the state of Vermont, even a school like Twenner Edmonds, which could have as many as three classes at each grade, if you don't fill those grades each year, you end up with lower class sizes in the upper grades as you lose some kids to attrition than you do in the lower grades. And that's just the reality. That's why some districts go to K2 schools and then 3, 5, because it suddenly doubles the number of classrooms that you have at each grade level, which gives you that ability to adjust without drastically increasing or decreasing class sizes. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, it does. Thank you so much for that.
But then there's a price you pay for that, which is you lose the sweetness of a K5 school, right?
Right.
So-
I know we've looked at, we're, we're looking at these numbers of 287, 303, 318, 334. Just so we don't lose sight of this, I know you might think of 287 as the lowest. That's the lowest choice we have. That 287 is a couple of car payments for somebody out there, all right? So don't lose the reflection of the impact. Whether or not we own that $287 does not take away from the fact that that's a couple of car payments for somebody and, and that's something, that's something very real. You may think the 287 to 334 is mild. You know what? For some of us here, it may be a mild thing. For others out there, I mean, I house these people and this can be tragic.
It depends on the, the value and it depends on whether or not you have other-
Yeah, of course. It's much more. But then again, so Liz is, don't, don't, do not ask questions on, do not make statements on this one. As long as we value the taxes based on the property value instead of the income, all right? We're saying that, you know what? You cannot have a penny in your pocket, but that property's worth a lot more money and I'm gonna lower the CLA and I'm gonna get you for it and you didn't make anything, right? It's out of our control, but we still have to consider what somebody else might be doing to our community, right? And lastly, and I hope nobody takes this wrong, and actually, this is a big support for, for change, all right? We are failing drastically in so many areas. Go on the, if you like going on the AOE data, go on the AOE data. You can go back to the 2005 year to through 2017. You've got 12 years of data there. Guess what our graduation rate has done in 12 years? Nothing. Guess what our, our dropout rate has done in 12 years? Nothing. How about our test scores in fifth, sixth, and fourth, fifth and sixth for the English and the math? Guess what? Nothing, right? We're not improving anything. We have to stop doing things the way we've always been doing it. We can't be afraid to do that. I mean, I, Stephanie and Victor, I gotta tell you, I trust you guys wholeheartedly on this stuff and then, and some, and obviously subsequently our superintendent, right? But when you guys want to change things, when you guys want to mess things up and have us defend your ideas, tonight's presentation is the stuff that helps us do it. So letting us get into a little bit, we know how to do nu- we, we do numbers, right? We're comfortable in that zone because for some odd reasons, numbers spell truth and that's not always true, right? But let us in on some of these things. Not that we're gonna question how you do this, we're just asking questions to better understand why you do this and, and help us to, to bring it to the voters and say, look, we really have a lot of faith in the directions you guys are going in on your class loading and so on. If somebody says classes are so small, well, yeah, now we know why, you know? Or if somebody says, hey, where are you gonna put, you know, are you putting these people, hey, look, strategically, these are the best places to put these people, right? So that, I really appreciate you guys letting us know more about the model and the structure that you use to come to these decisions. I really appreciate it.
I have one very important question.
Commissioner Johnson?
And that is that the, what I said, that I would be in favor of the buyback nine positions in athletics, does that include all of the enhancements?
Yes, everything includes the enhancements.
Everything includes the enhancements, okay. I, I take it back, I'm not in favor of all the enhancements. Detail.
Okay. Commissioner McLaren?
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing in support of the vision you presented, Yao, for the interventionists moving forward. Everything I've heard, both from Bonnie and from the Agency of Education, sort of point to very focused, a few very focused strategies to improving the achievement gap. And I'm looking at a report to the legislature from last week from, by the Agency of Education that aligns almost exactly with what Bonnie told us in her report maybe three weeks ago about our strategies for improving the achievement gap. And so the big, the big four, the number one is ensure elementary tier one instruction, which, you know, is in-classroom instruction meets most needs of most kids, I think. That vision does exactly that. It keeps kids in classrooms with their teachers to meet the most needs for most kids. The second one is provide additional instructional time outside of core subjects, students who struggle rather than providing interventions instead of core instruction. Also addresses that great. Ensures learners who struggle receive all instruction from highly skilled teachers. The teacher support approach, I think, is, I mean, is great. Help, will help teachers in classrooms that maybe have a kid that was taken out for an hour a day, better approach that child in a group environment. And the last one was create or strengthen system-wide approach to supporting positive student behaviors based on best, best practice, expert support. And the behavior coaches does exactly, exactly that. So it aligns not only with what Bonnie has been doing, but what the, the state is looking to move towards. And I, it's, it's amazing. I'm really happy to see what that looks like.
Let's get some closing comments to the superintendent, if you don't mind, and then, it's already 9:30, so we've got three hours burned into this one.
I have a clarifying question. So what's our objective tonight?
Tonight was, tonight was this.
What is it? Are we gonna deliberate further tomorrow?
And we're gonna vote tomorrow.
No, but are we deliberating tomorrow additionally?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we can.
Was, was that our intention as a board?
The intention, going back a couple of meetings ago, was to give us plenty of time to absorb all this stuff and make sure other, the questions that we might have would be better understood by us and better understand the impact of our decisions instead of just, okay, that sounds good.
Thanks. So can I ask another question?
Mm-hmm.
Does the superintendent need any additional direction from the board tonight?
No, not tonight. We presented these areas in hopes that we would ask questions and have the conversation to guide you to get to a decision. So if there's any additional workiness to do overnight for tomorrow, I mean, this is probably the time to-
Commissioner Carrick?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would, I see this as kind of a, only one side of the coin. So actually, one thing I'd like to ask is if we can have the impact on a $250,000 home instead of a 230, because that 250 is kind of the standard indicator that's been used annually. I'm happy to email you the document that compares this year's 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 that I'll use in $250,000.
Yeah, we used the 231 last year-
Yeah.
Because it was, we were kind of, well, first of all, we, we used it because the city was using the same number as the median home value and that was part of the work that they did around the city's bond issuance as well as ours. But we can do it on any particular number.
Is it, it's not as high as 500, is it, if you-
Probably, probably not.
Yeah, okay. And then, so, yeah, I mean, tax impact of various scenarios, it, I guess it has this embedded assumption that we're keeping all the enhancements and I'm just not supportive of keeping all the enhancements. And I'm not supportive of cutting athletics other than the idea of, you know, challenging the whole department to find sponsorships. And then with the interventionist, you know, I really appreciate the presentation tonight and it makes a lot of sense to me. I, I just feel like if it's something that's been in discussions and it's been in people's minds, I wish we had known earlier, it's hard for me to really process it at this late date. So I, so I'm having a hard time thinking about it on its merits because of the late date that we're hearing about it. And, and then we're hearing about it in the context of extreme budget pressures. And so all of that together just makes me more resistant to considering it on its merits. So I'm just inclined to feel like, you know, I'm not qualified to have an opinion about whether it's interventionists or teachers or how you use them or why you use them, but just to my mind, you know, my goal is to put a budget to the voters that says, you know, our kids need direct instructional resources and support for all of the things we know. And so this is the amount we need to make that work. If they turn it down, then absolutely I'm prepared to have the conversation of the needs to, you know, constrain more. But at this point, I, you know, I just haven't had enough time to really digest the information without that, without feeling pressured. So I'd like to delete some of the enhancements and keep the instruction.
Commissioner Sweeney?
One of the things that was on the presentation last week was the percentage increase in expenditures. Last week it was negative 0.2%. And perhaps for tomorrow night, you could just do a calculation and it would show us in each of these scenarios what the percentage decrease or increase in expenditures.
Right. I mean, so I always, we can do any and all of that, I think, just to make a point that we were talking about earlier. There's the percentage change in what our estimated total budget will be. There's the percentage change in our, our general fund. There's the change in our education spending. Only one of those three has a direct link to our, the tax impacts and everything that flows through. So I can, I can definitely do that. I just know that sometimes I think we put out one number there and I was like, oh, it changed by this much. And then you see maybe a total number on the ballot that is different from that and people are confused. I mean, the reality is there are a lot of different ways to answer that question. So I can do, I can certainly go back and, and do that. I just want people to be cognizant of that, that challenge, that, that for the kind of person who just casually looks through materials, it's easy to not differentiate between the subtlety of those three budget numbers. But I'm, I'm happy to do it. It's not a challenge. I can, I can pull, any one of those I can do.
Well, maybe just contextually to explain to what I was looking for, which is that we want to be able to differentiate as a board to the public what percentage in, of this percentage increase, what percentages do to our increased expenditures versus things we don't have control. That's really all I'm looking for. So leave it up to you how you want to represent that, but, you know, that was the idea.
Commissioner Wick?
Yeah, I had created a little dynamic budget tool that everybody saw and it is presented in a way that you could add and delete any of the enhancements or reductions that you saw fit. But I think if we're gonna start individually haggling on which reductions that Liz you may want versus what I or Ryan or Kathy or anyone else wants, I don't actually think that's a productive conversation for us to have tomorrow night, which is the line item budget, if you will, the line item markups of, of our options here. I don't want to have to go there because I don't think it'll be very helpful for us. So I would suggest that we do defer to the superintendent on that, but that we agree on a, a number and clearly the big picture things, which are the, the positions we're not eliminating. But I just think we go into a very slippery slope. We all start arguing our own personal views on the, on which enhancements we agree with.
Anyone else? So I'll respond to that in that if I'm gonna trust him on the investments, I've gotta trust him on the cuts. I don't think I can, I can have my different, of opinion, right? And that's because we always will. But I think if I trust him on the investments, which he knows I do, I hope, I hope you know it, but I do.
I do now.
Right, yeah, I can do now. And I do trust Victor and, was Victor still here? Is he back there? Victor and Stephanie to best utilize the resources for the benefit of our children.
So you're agreeing with Commissioner Wick?
Well, no, I just want to be sure that I'm on the other side.
Mark this moment.
I want to, yeah, but if, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna trust so much, look at you. If you're gonna trust so much of what we've heard tonight, and I, I so much appreciate everybody coming in and helping us on this, then we can't pick and choose what we trust is, you know, I agree on that, I don't agree on that, I agree. We can have that opinion, but make sure, so, but the other side says it's important to have your opinion, right? So if we come back tomorrow, it's very, we may not come, we, we may not come to consensus. Actually, we're not gonna be voting on the individual pieces, right? We're gonna be voting on a percentage.
Or a number.
It's a percentage.
Is it an actual number? We have to put in a memo. I mean, we have to put in the-
We gotta, we have the budget amount that we, yeah.
Yeah.
They're working on the ballot.
All right. So tomorrow we're gonna vote on that. What that is made up of is really what we have to, you know, what you feel inside. And we don't need a consensus that this $25,000 item comes out, you know? But she deserves the right to argue that assured.
Oh, absolutely. We all, yeah.
So tomorrow, I don't mind that conversation and, because it's just gonna, it's what we should be doing. It's, it's what should have been happening years ago, right? So now this, now's our chance to do the right thing. So at this case, we will have these conversations about anything tomorrow and then we'll come forward. Tomorrow, we have to have the vote on where we want to go from and we'll plan on that at the end of the conversation. We'll do it. We've done our job.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I just was imagining going over and looking at the enhancements and, and taking out the things that I don't agree with and figuring out what the percentage would be based on that, those reductions. And then I would feel comfortable not explaining to everybody why I don't think the $7,000 is on.
Yeah. May you have that tool, that kind of a tool, right, to plug and play on the different items?
I can do it, you know. And then I could come back and say, I feel comfortable, let's say I deleted all of the, all of the enhancements, which I wouldn't do, and it was worth 0.05%. I would say uncomfortable with eight. Just a suggestion.
Yep.
But that's, that's, it's fine. Appreciate having you.
Yeah, I mean, over the past couple of weeks, we've heard people coming to public comment and saying, what are, like, start the budget with the principle. We've heard people saying, you have to have a budget target, start from there. We've had people saying, what are you doing? Talking about the budget target instead of talking about what people need. I mean, like, there's a lot of approaches to this, but one of the things we need to have coming out of tomorrow is a story about the budget. And I hope we can generate a story to help sell the budget that we can all get behind, even if there are probably always gonna be little dimensions of a budget that some of us feel more passionately about or are particularly interested in and probably- about or are particularly interested in, and probably in any decision, the things we, I'm sure there's going to be something about what we do that I will wish had been somewhat different, that I can also talk about that, even if I'm supporting the bigger story. But we need to have a story, and I'm not fully sensing the story. I hear a lot of general support for the vision of addressing the achievement gap for sure, and even the general vision of Bonnie's presentation, and, you know, that's what Ryan said. But I hear a lot of uncertainty about the role of the proposed, potentially proposed reductions wherever this comes up. So I think that figuring out what's our story, what's the direction we're giving, how we make a story together, that part still seems a little fuzzy to me.
Okay, sure. Anyone, before we take a breather? Commissioner McLaren?
Can I ask you, Yao, if you have a sweet spot among these four options that you think will address our goals as a district most efficiently?
Well, I guess the, I mean, we've been sort of working along in terms of trying to find a good balance, because we are weighing the needs of the community as well as the needs of our schools. And I think we've done a pretty good job of getting to a range, you know, we started at double digits, and we've got a little bit of a range there. At this point, we've had enough conversations and talked about contingencies that we're prepared for the board to make a decision at this point, and we will go into action in terms of implementing whatever the board decides to be put forward. But I do agree with Susan Marie in terms of conversations around what, what's the meaning of our budget, right? And what's the story we're going to go out there with, right? In terms of why are we supporting this budget? So that's a piece that you might want to have a conversation around next, next, tomorrow, 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 in terms of going forward.
You know, just my personal thanks for all four of you, all five of you telling the truth, for being so present on these things. It's, I know we're asking a lot, and to no ring, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind you extending the invitation to Stephanie and Victor again tomorrow night, just in case, just in case we have more questions about, we might, just in case we have more questions, we have, we only have tomorrow to make a decision. I'd rather, I'd feel much more comfortable if nobody had as many concerns as we may have had a couple, you know, a week ago, and then hopefully we can get, even feel better about this, so.
What about by phone?
We could do Skype.
Honestly speaking, I'm meeting actually with a group of people from around the city with the Mozilla Foundation to look at how we do internet access across the city for all kids.
Mozilla still exists?
Yeah, I know, I didn't know that either, they have foundation. Firefox, so that's what I'll be doing tomorrow evening.
Okay. Stephanie, and again, it's up to you.
Yeah, I know, to be honest with you, I really would do not want to have to ask them to come out again, because I think you've got enough information. I mean, any, any further conversation is really getting down to a grander level around the role of the piece, right?
Whether your answers are available or not on that is certainly not a determinant of where we're going to go. It's just to make us better understand our decision.
Yeah. I would say that if you have any questions between now and tomorrow morning, then send them, then we can try to get answers from staff and be able to share that with you without them being here, so.
Can I have a motion adjourned? Commissioner Wick, can I have a second? Commissioner Chino, he's not here. Commissioner Wick. All those in favor of adjournment, please take a moment, say aye. Aye. All those against? Mary Jordan, thank you.